If you have any concern with the value of your property, or you're not getting every tax-saving exemption you're entitled to, just call me by September 18th, email me, come to our office, let us come to you. Let's go through it together so we can make sure the value your tax on is accurate, and also you get every exemption you're entitled to. The second that we do is what I love most about my job, is we give tax-saving exemptions to people that qualify. And there are a lot of exemptions under Florida law that people qualify for. The most important one by far is the homestead exemption. If somebody lives here in Fort Lauderdale, it's their primary residence, where they register to vote. If they don't vote, where they're decorated domicile. If they're there, they live, they get this very important exemption called the homestead exemption. It does two things. The first thing it does, it takes $50,000 of value off the tax roll, and no longer pay tax on, can save them maybe a thousand bucks a year at the beginning, but really protects them going forward. Because every year after they have a homestead exemption, the value your tax on can't go up more than 3%. And that is so important right now, because as you'll see, property values in Fort Lauderdale have skyrocketed, especially in the residential real estate market. People are coming from all over the world. They're paying a lot of money for properties here. So I always tell everybody, if you haven't filed for homestead exemption, please file. It'll make sure the value your tax on won't go more than 3% and your taxable value won't skyrocket with your market value because of what all these people are paying from everybody moving in here. Once you get that, there are so many other exemptions. There are exemptions for seniors, for veterans, for people who are visually impaired, for widows. There are lots of exemptions under Florida law that save people money. So I always tell everybody, go on our website at bcpa.net, click on exemptions. And if there's something you're not getting, just contact me by September 18th so we can make sure all of the exemptions are reflected in your tax bill so you can only pay your fair share of property taxes in November and not pay too much. The second thing, Mr. Mayor, that I wanted to do was kind of give the city right now a snapshot of where property values are. And property values, once again, have skyrocketed because, again, people are coming from all over the world. They're paying a whole lot of money for properties, and they're making Fort Lauderdale their home. To give you an idea, in 2023, if you took all the commercial and residential property value and sold it on the open market, you would have got right about $76.1 billion. It's a pretty big number. But fast forward just one year, there's been an increase in 2024 to about $82.97 billion. That's more than a 9% increase in market value. That's a big number because of what people are paying for properties. The taxable value is the value that you're going to use, that you're going to set your millage rate on to determine the amount of money that you need to provide great services to the people of Fort Lauderdale. And in 2023, the taxable value was right about $54.3 billion. Fast forward just one year, there's been an 8.56% increase in taxable value to about $58.9 billion. That's a pretty big number. Oh, yes, of course, I'm sorry.
Is that for the city or county wise?
That's the city.
Okay.
Just the city, thank you so much, Warren. And to give you an idea, if you keep your millage rate the same, which is actually one of the lowest millage rates in the entire county, which I thought was interesting. You're number six out of all 31 cities. Your operating millage rate is about 4.1193. What that means is the additional revenue you'll get over last year will be about $17.4 million, which is a pretty big number that you can provide a lot of services with to the people that live in Fort Lauderdale. What's very, very interesting is even though you do have an increase in your additional revenue, because values are going up, the vast majority of property owners in Fort Lauderdale are not going to see the bulk of that increase because most people here are homesteaded. The value of their tax on can't go up more than 3%. Most of that money is being paid for by new people moving into Fort Lauderdale, paying top dollar for properties, and from a substantial amount of new construction being placed in the tax roll. This year, there's about almost $600 million of new taxable value placed in the tax roll. The largest was a 140-unit apartment complex that was put on for about $34 million. But something I thought was very, very interesting, the next four large were all single-family homes that ranged from $33 million to $21 million. You also have 38,000 single-family homes. It is. And those are just the next four. There is a lot that go down, up to 10 million. And others, it's pretty incredible, the amount of new construction that people are putting on the tax roll by building these very, very large homes. You also have 38,842 homestead exemptions. You have 2,174 low-income seniors who struggle to make ends meet that get a low-income senior exemption. And something I'm very happy about is you have 464 long-term senior exemptions, basically meaning that those seniors who really struggle to make ends meet pay no property taxes to the city or the county. And I'd just like to talk about that because not every city has a long-term senior exemption. The city has to adopt it. And to qualify, you have to be over 65. You had to made under last year $36,614. You had to been in your home for 25 years or more, and the value of your home has to be under $250,000. And if you meet that, which is very hard to meet, you get a very big tax reduction. And even though Fort Lauderdale is massive, only 464 seniors qualify. And so Fort Lauderdale, you all were very smart to note that 464 people not paying taxes is a drop in your bucket when it comes to your loss of revenue. It really doesn't even make a dent. It doesn't move a decimal. It doesn't hurt the residents whatsoever by that loss. But for those 464 seniors who struggle to make ends meet every day, that really helps them and is very life-changing going forward because that's a lot of money they get to save so they can have a better life. I think it's a great thing. I hope every single city follows Fort Lauderdale's lead. It's the right thing to do. You also have 3,538 people who get a widow's exemption. You have 351 American hero totally permanently disabled veterans that pay no property taxes to the city of Fort Lauderdale. You also have three American hero totally permanently disabled first responders that pay no property taxes. Now, when it comes to single-family homes, this year, you've had 734 sales of single-family homes so far. The average sale price is about $1.34 million, which is a pretty significant number. The median sale price is lower at $708,000, but those numbers are both significantly higher than last year's number as well, which is very interesting to me because even with higher interest rates, people are still paying a lot of money for properties in Fort Lauderdale, more than the last year and more than the year before. When it comes to condominium parcels, you've had 696 sales and the average sale price about $734,000. The median sale price is right about $500,000, significantly higher than before. And something I just forgot to mention a second ago, even though, for example, the average sale price of a single-family home is $1.3 million, the average taxable value is about $586,000, which basically means that people, when they come here, they love living here, they don't leave, and so they get the benefit of that Save Our Homes cap. It's a pretty interesting thing. The last thing, Mr. Mayor, I was hoping to quickly talk about is something I love to talk about everywhere I go, and it's cracking down on title fraud. You've heard this speech a lot, and I'm going to tell you it again, and it's going to be exactly the exact same speech I gave last year. But I get to talk about convictions now, which is great. I'm very excited about that. But I love talking about cracking down on title fraud because unfortunately, South Florida is the title fraud capital of the world. It's the capital of the world because you have criminals, and that's what they are. And what they do is they walk into the recording division every single day in the county, every single county in the state of Florida. They file bad deeds on people's properties, fake deeds, and they take those fake deeds and they extort people for money or mortgage rent or sell the property. They do it all the time. And the reason it's so easy for them is every single county has a ministerial duty. They have to accept, under Florida law, any document filed with them. So you have these criminals, they come in, they file a fake deed, and they do something nefarious with it. So as you know, the first thing we want us to do is give the people of Broward County the opportunity to fight the fraud before the fraud occurs. So three years ago, we came up with a great program. It's free to the public called Owner Alert. It's really a notification program letting people know if there's been a title change in their property. And here's how anybody can sign up. They go to our website at bcpa.net, they type in their name, they type in their parcel ID number, and they type in their email address. And if we have their email address on file, that's because we had it with their homestead application. They're automatically verified. If we don't, they have to upload their Florida driver's license or Florida ID. If they don't have that, they have to upload a utility bill or something proving ownership. And then if any document, legitimate or not, is filed changing ownership, they'll be notified instantaneously so they can make sure somebody can't steal their property, mortgage their property, and cloud their title. We've actually had about 250,000 Broward County proprietors sign up so far, which I think is fantastic. They can get an email alert, a text message alert, and a hard copy in the mail. And something I love about the city of Fort Lauderdale is 50% of all your homestead exempted properties have signed up for our Owner Alert program. I think it is a really great thing. And the only reason we've been able to reach such a high number is because you all have been such great partners with us. And as you know, when I started this program, I started getting phone calls from residents. And they would call me, and they would say, Marty, I just got an alert from your office that somebody changed the title of my property, but I didn't do it. And then I got more and more and more. And I realized how big of a deal it was. So I came up with a little bit of a different idea. I wanted to work with law enforcement, build criminal cases, and put the people in jail who are doing this. So I called the Florida Department of Revenue, which oversees all the property appraisers for the state of Florida. And I go, DOR, this is what I want to do. And I gave them a lot of heartburn. And they basically said, you know, Marty, you're a property appraiser. You determine the value of properties, you give exemptions, you're not law enforcement, but we understand it's a big deal for South Florida, so we'll approve your program, make you the guinea pig for the rest of the state. I then went to the Broward County Commission, which funds my budget. I go, County Commission, the Department of Revenue just approved a new program in my office called our Crimes Against Property Team. I would love if you would fund it. All nine county commissioners said absolutely. I then went to see Sheriff Tony. And I go, Sheriff Tony, I have a new program in my office, our Crimes Against Property Team. I'm excited about it, but I have a problem. I'm not law enforcement, you are. I can't issue probable cause affidavits, search warrants. I can't arrest people. I cannot do the job of law enforcement. You can. Can we work together? And Sheriff Tony said, absolutely, Marty. And we entered into an inter-local agreement to work together. And he's actually assigned now three sheriff's detectives that work in our office, for our office, so we can do the job of law enforcement. I then went to see Harold Pryor, our state attorney. And I go, Harold, you know, the sheriff and I, we're working together. We're going to build these criminal cases. And if we bring you cases that you think are prosecutorial, would you prosecute the people that are doing this? And he goes, absolutely, Marty. And he assigned an assistant state attorney to work with our office so we can actually prosecute the people that we bring to them. And so now that our Crimes Against Property Team is formed, it consists of our director, who at one point was very high up in the sheriff's office. We have four employees of our office who are former law enforcement, but currently non-swarm. We have three sheriff's detectives. We have a Fort Lauderdale detective, which, thank you very much. We have a Tana Davey Reserve detective. We have a Florida Department of Law Enforcement detective, and we have support staff. And over the past two years, we've had hundreds of criminal investigations. We've had dozens of arrests. We've had a number of convictions. We've been able to stop the fraudulent sale of millions of dollars worth of property, and we've been able to work with the court system to get property back to people in a much more expeditious and cost-efficient manner. And even though I can get into a ton of different cases, there are just four I wanted to quickly give to the residents. And I talk about these cases because each one is a little bit different. But they all show exactly how bad the people are that do this and the extent that they'll go to to try to defraud somebody's property. And two of these cases I really wanted to talk about as well because we could not have arrested these people and done the job of what we do if it wasn't for the city of Fort Lauderdale and your police department and Anthony Wynn, who you actually assigned to work in our office so we can do this job. The first one involved a married couple, two wives. One of the wives worked for one of our hospital districts. The other wife worked in the real estate industry. The wife that worked in the hospital district would find out when people would pass on. She would then take their confidential information and give it to her wife who was in the real estate industry, who would find that they had property in Broward County and heirs here. If they had property and no heirs, they'd file fake deeds on the properties. They'd sell the properties on Zillow, mortgage the properties, rent the properties. They profit the amount of likely millions of dollars. But something I'm very, very happy about is they were both found guilty, and even though they're a married couple, they're spending their time in different prisons, which I think is a good thing. They should not be together. Another example happened, and by the way, Fort Lauderdale was instrumental in helping us arrest and prosecute those two wives. I really appreciate that. The second one I like to talk about, didn't involve Fort Lauderdale, but it was an arrest and a conviction that I like to talk about because I thought it was very interesting. There is a man that was not from Broward County, was from Miami-Dade County. And what he did was he found out there was a senior. And he found that this senior was very sick, bedridden, that lived in Southwest Ranches. He also found this senior had a five-acre parcel, free and clear, of no mortgage. And he decided he wanted to steal it and take a mortgage on the property. So he filed a fake corporation with Tallahassee that had made the officer and director that senior. He then filed a fake deed saying the corporation owned the property. He then made a fake ID saying he was that man. He then walked into a small business in the city of Sunrise, said, you know what, I've fallen on some hard times, made some bad financial decisions. But I have this one thing, a five-acre parcel in Southwest Ranch that's free and clear. Can I please have a half a million dollar mortgage? And the mortgage company said, sure, we'll give it to you. And this way, they really should have realized something fishy was going on. The closing for a five-acre parcel in Southwest Ranch for half a million bucks took place at a Burger King in Hialeah. So you go to the Burger King in Hialeah, and you got the bad guy trying to get the money. You got the mortgage company about to be out a lot of money, and you're the smartest person in the room, the notary. And the notary's looking at this thing that's very bizarre. So she asked for the guy's thumbprint, which she gave. She then provided it to our office. We gave it to the, we contacted the Tana Davey Police Department because they police Southwest Ranches and the U.S. Secret Service because they handle a lot of the identity theft cases in America. Fortunately, the man was arrested. Unfortunately, he was given the full $515,000 mortgage. He spent about $80,000. We've recovered the rest, but I was very happy because he was actually sentenced, though, to three years in federal prison. He's currently serving time, and I think it's a really good thing. Another example happened that we could not have had these arrests and convictions without the city of Fort Lauderdale, as they were one of the lead agencies on it. It was the Broward Sheriff's Office, Fort Lauderdale, and our office doing this. And this is one of our biggest cases. And it involved a number of people, more who are actually going to be arrested that are involved in this conspiracy. And something I was told, but I was never able to verify this, I heard that the number of people that were involved in this all met each other in jail and came up with a scheme in jail. I haven't verified it, but it may be true. And here's what they did. They decided to use the court system to steal people's properties. And so you have the ringleaders. The ringleaders would file what's called quiet title actions in circuit court, basically lawsuits in circuit court, saying this senior, or this bank, or this person no longer wants the property. The return of service would go to the guy's buddy, who was in a mobile home in Hillsborough County. And he would say, oh, yeah, I represent that senior, that bank, that person. Yeah, they don't want the property more. Put in this guy's name or his company's name. They sold dozens and dozens of homes that we found so far, and we tend to find more every single month. I learned a few things about that case, though. The first thing that we all know is the homeowner is a victim. I also learned the community can be a victim as well because in one of those homes, it was in Fort Lauderdale. And after they stole the home, they moved a whole bunch of their buddies into that home. And one day, about 3:00 in the morning, one of the buddies walked out of that home. He walked to a neighbor's home at 3:00 in the morning, and he tried every single door till he found one they forgot to lock the night before, and he walked in. He walked through the hallway, through the kitchen, through another hallway, into the bedroom of the husband and the wife, standing over the wife while she was sleeping, about do God knows what. Fortunately, the wife woke up, started screaming. He was then chased out by their very big dog. He was arrested, given an ankle marring, charged with burglary, and went right back to the stolen home. And then I learned a third thing. I learned not only is the homeowner a victim, not only is the community a victim, but also sometimes, every once in a while, there could be innocent people squatting at home that may be a victim as well. Because when you live in a stolen home, sometimes there is no electricity, no running water. It's a very dangerous place to live. And when we worked with the city of Fort Lauderdale Police Department to remove the people from the home, they even had a three-year-old child that was with him, who was obviously innocent. There are a number of people that I believe will ultimately go to jail in this case. But there are three people that I can talk about right now where you have convictions. The first is the ringleader. His name is Tyrone Jones. Tyrone last week was convicted and sentenced to eight years in prison, 10 years probation, $360,000 that he owes to victims for restitution. And also, if he violates his probation at all, he'll likely receive a life term in prison. Another one involved a man named Jeffrey Aronson. Jeffrey Aronson was a smaller person in this, but still committed a fraud. He received five years probation and $31,000 in victim restitutions. And the other person is a lady named Anissa Flores. Anissa Flores received five years probation, but she was also ordered deported by the U.S. Immigration Court to her home country of Moldova, which I think is a very good thing. The last example I want to give, Mr. Mayor, just for the residents, just shows how bad the people are that do this. There was a guy that made a little bit of a mistake. He actually called our office, and he emailed us. And he said, hey, you know, my 96-year-old grandmother, she lives in Tamarack, and she just died, but she left me her property. How do I get in my name? And what do I do? And our office said, well, we have to see a deed that is in your name. We also have to see a will that's been probated, maybe an order of the court. And he goes, oh, I'll get you that tomorrow. So the next day, he sent us a fake deed and a fake will. And you know it was fake right off the top because we're the notary, we're supposed to say County of Broward, it's the county of Florida, things of that nature. So we sent it to our Crimes Against Property Team, who started an investigation. And during the course of their investigation, they actually found that this man who was squatting in the home actually found a legitimate buyer for this property using the fake documents he provided to our office. And we also found out who the lawyer was that was going to handle the closing for the legitimate buyer. And we reached out to the lawyer. And we said, hey, you know, this is a fraudulent transaction. It's not true, it's criminal, it's bad. However, would you please go through with it? And he goes, absolutely. So BSO went undercover in his office. One pretended they were a lawyer, the other pretended they were support staff. The guy drove up in his car, came inside, signed the documents, and was arrested. But after they arrested, they searched his car. And when they searched his car, they found a treasure trove of information about how he was trying to defraud the Broward County public. They found the identities of 52 Broward County residents, 53 Broward County residents. They found their credit card information, their PIN numbers, their tax return information, their social security numbers. This guy was so smart, he even found a fake checkbook that was drawn in a very legitimate Broward County business where he was pretending he was an employee of that business and cashing checks in the amount of thousands of dollars. I wanted to tell those stories because I hope the other 50% of homesteaded properties in Fort Lauderdale and anybody else that owns property, if you haven't signed up for our Owner Alert program, please do so. I think it's your first line of defense so you make somebody can't steal your most important asset, your home. And I also like to scream out this stuff from the rooftops because I want everyone out there watching to know if they want to do this in Broward County, they're not welcome here. And if they do it, we're going to work very hard to put them in jail. With that said, Mr. Mayor, as I always say, I've had five cups of coffee, two Red Bulls, and a Diet Coke is my morning ritual. But if there's, I'm a little wired, if there's any questions, I'd love to answer them.
First of all, can I?
All right. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Okay.
And I also also say, if politics doesn't work out, I'd be a great auctioneer. That's like my backdrop.
No, 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 I have a better thing. We have a, you're a very fast talker. And as you've noticed, our city clerk is not here today. And we could use somebody to fill in for, who could talk very quick to read the.
I would be perfect for that.
Okay, first of all, can I just have just a couple of quick minutes, Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead, go ahead.
This is an example, you know, there's institutions and buildings, but government is more about people and interpersonal relationships. Listening to your story in the years that you've been in this community, this is a testament to, not the institution, but you as an individual.
Thank you.
All of the relationships that you've had along the way must have gelled. I want to thank you for that, seriously.
Thank you, Warren.
Something earlier, at the beginning, you pointed something out. I just want to touch upon it. The value that, the increased value and the increased tax of value for Fort Lauderdale. I guess if people move in here from within the state, within the state, they bring their Save Our Homes. So people that from out of state, is that the difference that you were alluding to between the actual value and the taxable value?
It could. So as you know, the portability is a fantastic thing. If you live anywhere in the state of Florida and you have had a homestead exemption for some time, you get the benefit, of course, of the Save Our Homes cap, which basically is the value of your tax on can't go up more than 3%. So as you know, over time, your market value is high, your assessed value is low. You have all this value you don't pay taxes on. If you now you decide you want to buy another home or move anywhere else in the state of Florida and make that your new homestead, you can take that value with you and not pay taxes on it. And so there are people from Florida that are actually moving into Broward. They are taking that with them. However, sometimes when that happens, the people that they're buying the homes from sometimes actually had even more of a Save Our Homes cap, maybe than their home longer. But what's really driving the values up are people coming from other states and other countries and coming in here and paying a lot of money for properties. I can't tell you the amount of people from New York, California, anywhere where there's an income tax, coming in here in droves and paying top dollar for properties. And that's really driving the residential real estate market. The other thing, truthfully, that's really in Fort Lauderdale in particular is booming, is your economy. Your local economy, as you know, is pretty fantastic. People are working, and businesses are making a whole lot of money. And one way that we actually value businesses is, one, based on not just comparable sales, but also the income they produce, whether hotels or others. And because Fort Lauderdale is doing so well, that's also driving values up there, too. And because you all are doing so well, there's a lot of new construction. People are paying a lot of money to construct properties here, and that's also going onto the tax roll. All of those are really what is increasing the value like it is. And as I said before, the 38,842 homesteaded properties in Fort Lauderdale, the value of their tax on can't go up more than 3%. So they're not seeing the brunt of that increase. It's really everybody else and those other factors.
Well, thank you once again.
Oh, thank you, Warren. And that was so nice of you to say that before. I really, I thank you for your great service to the people of Fort Lauderdale as well. Thank you.
And all of that is allowing us to keep the millage rate the same all these many years.
In fact, just one follow-up on that. So Marty, again, thank you for always coming every year and giving us all the good news. And as Commissioner Sturman said, your service is so greatly appreciated. Thank you. I have a question for you. So as the mayor just mentioned, Fort Lauderdale has kept its millage rate the same for 18 years. Any city in Broward County that comes close to keeping a millage rate the same for 18 years?
Well, I love all 31 cities equally. Well, you know what, I'll tell you this, I'd have to go look. I know that there, with 31 cities, as you know, every single city has different needs. And you have to try to figure, okay, where do we want to, what do we need to provide great services to the people of our cities? So I can't speak for the other cities, but one thing I do think is pretty awesome, though. I was very impressed when I saw that Fort Lauderdale, which is one of the biggest economic engines of Broward County. I mean, there's so much going on here. The fact that your millage rate is six out of 31 cities, I thought was pretty impressive that it was on the lower end. But at the end of the day, as you know, and I say this out most reflect to everybody, you know, you have a lot of things you have to pay for. I mean, you have parks, you have lots of services. You have a lot of new initiatives that have come out of Tallahassee that you're trying to figure out, I've been reading about. And at the end of the day, what I think is really good, you're going to, budget's going to be provided to you, and then you just have to kind of see how much money do we need. And at that time, you'll make the best decision possible And at that time, you'll make the best decision possible, so whether to increase the millage, keep it the same, decrease it. But I think, what I feel comfortable about is, you know, I know this commission very, very well, and this is your policy decision, but I always feel that everybody up here always acts in the best interest of the people of Fort Lauderdale and will make the best decision at that time. Great question.
Thank you.
But may I add one thing to it, if it's okay?
Sure.
But in the truth and millage notice, the TRIM notice that we're sending out to every single resident, it's going to show the dates and times you're going to be discussing your tax rates and your budget hearings. And I know you want this as well. Every resident that wants to participate should come and let you all know if they like the millage where it is, if they want to decrease, if they think it should be increased. It's really their time to be able to speak to you all, so you can make the best decision possible. So I hope they really do come and after they get that notice. Thank you, Steve.
No, thank you.
Pam?
Yes, Marty, how are you doing today?
I'm great, Pam, how are you doing?
I can tell you always come and light up the room. Thank you.
Thank you.
And thank you for your presentation. At the beginning of your presentation, you had given us numbers for 464 seniors that exempt from paying their property tax.
Yes.
And it's based on the value of the home. That value, $250,000 now. How did we get to that number? And future, will that number be increased? Because you're telling us about the value of the average home that's being sold is 1.3 million for single families, right?
Yes, it is.
So is there an opportunity where, how would it be for that number to be increased? Because it's very few people who have a home at this point in Fort Lauderdale that's valued at 250,000.
You are so right about that. When I look at homes now for 250, you really can only find it, for the most part, in some senior condos spread out throughout the county.
Okay.
And every exemption is in the Constitution. And it just so happens that that $250,000 limit was put in the Constitution by the voters when $250,000 was still like an average sale price for a single family home throughout Florida. And it hasn't been increased since then. But last year, there was a proposal that many of us had supported to try to put something on the ballot to actually increase that, so that more people now can qualify. Because you're 100% right, most people, most homes, doesn't matter where you are, you can't find anything for that amount. And so this year, in the next legislative session, there's probably going to be another proposal for the 2026 ballot year. It could either be next year or the year after. And I'm not sure if you all could do this, if you'd like to at one time, when you discuss your legislative priorities. I know that you all do that. That's going to be something I think is a very big deal and something many of us are really going to push. I would love Fort Lauderdale's help with that as well, to try to get the legislators to put that on the ballot, because I think it is a reasonable request and something that is actually needed, that can really help a number of other seniors that right now should qualify but don't qualify because of that one specific part. Oh, thank you. Great question. Thank you, Pam. Really appreciate it.
Any other questions?
Excellent. Well, thank you all so much.
That's it. Thank you so, thank you, really, really appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, guys.
Bye, everybody. You're always welcome back, Marty. And congratulations on your reelection.
Oh, thank you very much.
Absolutely. Okay, next on our agenda, business one, the Urban Land Institute City Hall project presentation. Who will be speaking on your behalf?
So Anthony Fajardo, Assistant City Manager, is going to be leading off.
Okay, great.
And bringing in some folks to help.
So, good afternoon, Mayor, Vice Mayor and Commissioners, Anthony Fajardo, City of Fort Lauderdale. So, as you might recall, in November of 2003, we were informed by the ULI that we had been chosen for one of their leadership programs. So what this does is bring a group of people with a varied background in law, land use, architecture, that type of thing, to work on basically issues for municipalities and other organizations that are having, would like some additional input on how they can tackle those. So the ULI has looked at our city hall, and they have put together a project. I'd like to introduce Kushla Talbot from Greenberg Charg to come up and start the presentation. Thank you.
Thank you.
I just want to make sure this is working. Yes. Hello, Mr. Mayor.
Hi there.
Commissioners. My name is Kushla Talbot. It is a pleasure to be here today with my team from the Urban Land Institute's Leadership Program. For those that may not be familiar, ULI is a nonprofit research institute that studies and shapes real estate trends and topics. And each year, they host a Leadership Institute, which is a selective application process geared towards real estate professionals with a minimum of seven years of experience. And so those candidates are tasked with a pro bono service project for either a government entity or nonprofit which has a land use issue or concern. And so our team was honored to be tasked with the redevelopment of Fort Lauderdale City Hall. We know we've heard, you've heard from many different groups about the city hall redevelopment, but the city, through Anthony Fajardo, asked us to provide some input in the following questions. Where should city hall be located? What services or department should be located in city hall? How can the structure be designed to include public meeting spaces or event spaces? Should we include other components like residential, affordable housing or office? And how can it be funded? We have worked really tirelessly over the last six months to not only lean into our expertise, but to really understand, you know, the lay of the land. We have met with each of you to get your viewpoints. We've met with the department directors and the city manager's office to understand operationally, how will the city hall work? And then we've also attended those Saturday morning reimagining Fort Lauderdale meetings to understand the community's perspective and what they want to see from their city hall. And this is really an effort to wrap our arms around the issue and recommend what we believe is the best path forward. It's important to note that what we present today, it's not a design proposal and it's not a construction feasibility analysis. It's really just our recommendation with several key principles for you to use when you're ready to move forward with your city hall. And so without further ado, I'm going to turn it over to Muriel, who's going to talk about our site selection criteria.
Thank you, Kushla. Now, over the years, the city's population grew significantly, requiring additional staff and employees which no longer fit into the existing eight-story current city hall. To accommodate that growth, the city services expanded to a number of buildings. As shown on this map, the buildings are scattered throughout the city. This caused a decentralization of city services. As shown on this map, the ULI team physically visited each of the city-owned and city-controlled parcels. We also considered federally owned properties before ultimately deciding to continue to keep the existing location for the future city hall. Now, several factors were taken into account when analyzing the viability of each site's potential. Some of the more critical factors include access to transportation. Given the potential consolidation of departments, we felt it should be easily accessible by all districts. The secondary driver being the Florida, the growth of, the growth trajectory of South We also considered location of nearly dense population areas, close proximity to high concentration of existing commercial activity, city growth and development, favorable zoning, preserving green space and placemaking, as well as avoiding city-controlled projects coming down the pipeline. Now, here to speak a little bit more about programming, we have Jake.
Good afternoon. So, once we went through and selected the site, we were tasked with programming the building. The immediate need for us was actually getting the city hall reestablished and consolidating some of the departments. The list of the departments that we are considering consolidating are in the report, but it boils down to about 800 employees. We averaged about 350 gross square foot per employee to get about a 280,000 gross square foot building. The intent was to not only have a city hall with all its facilities that should be very inviting to the community, it should be very secure, it should be tech-forward, it should also be, when possible, have flexible meeting spaces such as the one that we're in right now. But we felt it should be a hub for local businesses, local artists, and also maybe a little bit of a museum to give people the understanding of where Fort Lauderdale came from and where it's going. Aside from that, we do believe that there should be third-party spaces. Some of them could be as simple as a food and beverage outlet, others could be something as simple as a barber shop. But the intent is for it to be not only city hall, but a community hub. And now, to talk a little bit more about some of the design ideas that you're looking at, I'm going to bring up Bertram.
The new city hall should be designed with a visually inviting entrance, seamlessly fitting into the urban fabric of downtown Fort Lauderdale. We envision a large covered open-air ground floor, similar to the Perez Art Museum, which is aesthetically pleasing, welcoming to visitors, and functional in this Florida heat. The building should not just be an administrative hub, but a symbol of the city's commitment to sustainability, proudly aiming for LEED certifications. Solar panels and electrical vehicles' charging stations should be integral parts of the structure, showcasing the city's forward-thinking approach to energy and transportation. Central to the design should be the creation of spaces that foster community interaction and cultural appreciation. As shown here, we have proposed a sale lounge and cafe based upon the design of the city's loco, and because the city is the yacht capital of the world. This area is intended to serve as a casual gathering spot for employees and residents alike, while the historic interactive park will offer a journey through the city's rich and dynamic past. Public art displays and event space are planned to host a variety of cultural activities, making city hall a resilient epicenter of civic life. Now, here's Carlos to touch more on the crucial role of resiliency and infrastructure for the new city hall.
So, after the historic rain events of April 12, 2023, the recent storm events, and being knee-deep in water, the new Fort Lauderdale city hall must become a symbol of resiliency for its residents. Creating a robust structure to withstand future threats like hurricanes, flooding, rising sea levels is essential. Setting the finished floor above the 100-year storm to reduce the risk of flooding, protecting essential equipment and documents, and ensuring continued operation of critical services during and after disasters. Green infrastructures like rain gardens strategically placed around the city hall can act as natural filters, including and contributing to a healthier environment for the staff and the visitors. Absorbing and filtering rainwater, stormwater management will lessen the effects and impacts around the city, the city's infrastructure drainage system. Green spaces incorporated into stormwater management strategy can create pockets of recreation and improve the overall livability of the city. The building's orientation, conference room orientation, glazing window treatments, energy-efficient photovoltaic panels, water conservations are some of the design aspects that need to be included. For the delivery methods of the project, there are several delivery methods, but prior to determining which delivery method would the city use, the procurement department is to ensure compliance with the Florida statutes. Our proposed delivery method would be a modified design bid build, and the modification being bringing on a private sector guidance to help develop the project. And to further a little more on the finances, here's Esteban.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, Councilman. The purpose of this section is really to give you all an insight to the current residential and commercial real estate market, so you all can make an informed decision when the time comes to make that decision. Again, the decision is yours. As you know, the city of Fort Lauderdale has an excellent credit rating, AAA according to S&amp;P and AA according to Moody's. Means that you all have a very strong ability to borrow funds for capital improvement projects. The estimated project cost for a project of this scope is roughly $180 million. We've heard several numbers, and all that is really a function of whatever the final scope you all determine to go forward with. Accordingly, that's a lot of money. So you all should make best efforts, if possible, to apply for any potential government or federal subsidies available for these kinds of projects. And several of them are listed here are available for these kinds of projects. And really, what you all would like to do is to alleviate the financial exposure for a project of this magnitude, given the other ongoing capital improvement projects that you have going on throughout your city. And what is the biggest hurdle that we currently have in this market coming out of COVID? It's interest rates. And as you can tell, as you can see, sorry about that, technical malfunctions. But as you can see, according to CBRE, interest rates, cap rates, and the whole economic sector have put a huge strain on office. Vacancy rates will peak at about 19% to 20% this year alone. So, doesn't feel great to be building office right now, but there is some sentiment that core markets, such as South Florida, Fort Lauderdale, do have a need for prime core office. So that's something that you all should consider going forward. With respect to, with respect to other avenues that we've heard for this site have been apartments, affordable housing, and potential residential uses to help alleviate financial pressures on renters in today's market, which is really a function of supply. Well, what we're seeing is that start, real estate starts are down from four years ago, and really, that's because of interest rates. Interest rates right now for the private sector are hovering above 7% today. Given the recent run on the 10-year, it's probably higher than that last time I checked my phone. So it's a very different climate than it was four years ago, when, before COVID happened. And it's not historically high, but it is, in the near term, very pressured to the current financial economics. The apartment sector specifically has been under many pressures since the COVID pandemic. And what we will learn is that if you all would like to do a mixed-use development on that site, there are potential avenues. And here comes Michael to speak on perhaps the future uses of the project.
Thanks, Esteban. So our primary goal with this assignment has been to focus on a new city hall. But in the background, we've also listened to a lot of our commissioners and stakeholders and citizens who have entertained the idea of including more than just a city hall and an administration facility. In order to incorporate affordable housing, workforce housing, potential future commercial uses and office, we recommend a future mixed-use development on the adjacent site to the new city hall and the old city hall site. So there's currently a four-story parking garage that serves the surrounding office buildings and the existing city hall site. That parking garage sits on two and a half acres. The zoning in place would be enough to provide over 800 housing units, which could be affordable, workforce market rate, and hundreds of thousands of square feet of office. We see this through public-private partnership or some other method to be an opportunity to create new revenues for the city of Fort Lauderdale via ground lease payments, percentage rents, et cetera. It would, it would serve a dual purpose of increasing revenues to offset some of the operational and development costs of a new city hall facility, as well as providing new affordable housing and new commercial activity and new tax base. We appreciate all of your time here today, and we're happy to answer any questions.
Okay, great. Thank you so much. It's a lot to digest here.
Of course.
Anyone have any questions of these folks? Start with Commissioner Herbst, do you have any questions?
I'm disappointed in this. This is entirely inconsistent with the direction I think we should be going. I'm not looking to build something that's a community gathering space, museum, art galleries, cafes, and everything else. I want a functional city hall. I want a basic government building. I'm not trying to create economic revitalization in the downtown. If you've walked around our downtown, it's doing very well. We don't need economic revitalization in our downtown. It's growing so fast that our residents can barely access anything anymore because it's so crowded. That's not what I'm driving for. Consolidation of employees to promote interdepartmental coordination. I've worked for the city as a staff person for 16 years. I can tell you that you don't need to bring everybody together from these disparate departments. If you're going to tell me that all of finance needs to be together to operate, great, I agree with you. If you're going to tell me that finance needs to be next to engineering, I'm going to tell you, you've never worked in a government before. They don't need to be together. There's no interdepartmental coordination that needs to take place. So the basic premise of what you're talking about here doesn't make sense to me. The ballpark number of $180 million, when we were looking at participating in the joint government center, and that was going to be a $400 million bite for us, and that was five or six years ago. I don't think you can get it done for anywhere near the number you're looking at. I don't think you're taking into consideration the fact that we are going to see our workforce decline in the next 10 years. Okay? JP Morgan is anticipating a loss of 300 million jobs due to artificial intelligence over the next 10 years. A lot of the jobs that we have in this city are similarly going to be displaced, and we have no idea when and how that takes place. You also know that hybrid workspaces are the future. Okay? Back-to-work hasn't worked in most office environments throughout the country. People prefer a hybrid work schedule. That's going to be the employment model of the future. It's not going to be remote, it's not going to be in the office, it's going to be a hybrid. Okay? That's what's going to attract the next generation of employees. When you do that, you're looking at more of a hoteling-type concept, open floor spaces. You don't need the same number of offices to bring people together. We should be thinking about how we're going to downsize for the workforce of the future. This isn't doing that. And to put it on the same location, as far as I'm concerned, the best use for the existing location is somewhat of what you're talking about, but that entire four-acre site needs to be repurposed, not with city hall. If anything, if you want to use existing land, we should be putting city hall adjacent to the police station and make a government campus over there. That whole four-acre site could be utilized very similar to the Naftali project that we just approved recently with a, I think it's eight or nine-story garage podium and two towers. If you're going to maximize that, maximize it. Don't put city hall on one piece, underutilize that asset, and then try and monetize the rest of the site. Monetize the entire site. There are other options available to us. We've had, you know, approaches from the 110 East Broward owner to come and look at us and do a partnership with them, where we give up some of our parking space and they give us that corner location over there, which is right now retail stores. That's an option. The federal courthouse around the corner, I know the mayor has talked and vice mayor have talked about utilizing that site, repurposing that. You know, go in there, gut it, clear it, and turn it into, if you want to talk about something iconic, that's probably the most iconic building that we have in all of downtown Fort Lauderdale. Another great opportunity to repurpose that and create, if you want to incorporate all these things you're talking about, about public spaces and museums and cafes, which I don't agree with, but leaving that aside, that's a better location for it. To take our existing site and build something that's going to be for the workforce of the last 50 years, I think is a tragic mistake. Last thing I want to do is build a downtown office tower. You talk about vacancy rates. There are buildings in San Francisco that sold for $260 million five years ago that are going for $25 million today. Same thing in New York, same thing in Chicago, and it's because of the vacancy rates. The commercial office market is collapsing around the country. Yes, we're doing a little bit better in South Florida. Florida in general is doing better. Our vacancy rates, I think, are running 16% last time I talked with some folks. You know, not the 30% or 40% you're seeing in some of these other downtown core areas. People are not coming back to offices. I think this is a mistake. I think, again, you're driving looking in the rearview mirror. You're not looking forward with this. This is not a forward-looking document. So, again, I'm disappointed with this. This is not the direction I want to see us moving, and I don't think that this is in the best financial interests of the residents of this city. I think the number is wildly underestimated as to what it's going to cost. And I think we need to, I really think we need to rethink this entirely. So, apologize for my passion, but I really think we're going in the wrong direction with this. So, I'll leave it at that. Thank you.
Okay.
John, can I ask you a question?
Wait, wait, wait. Let's let each commissioner.
No, no, no. A question to John about what he just said.
Yes, sir.
Yeah. You were saying that there's high vacancy rates, but you said some of the buildings in some of these other cities was going up in value, but they're higher.
No, no, no. They're selling for 25% of the value that they traded for three, four years ago. Commercial property owners, they're collapsing, property values are collapsing throughout the country. The commercial market is in a freefall right now. People are walking away from their buildings, they can't refinance them, nobody's putting money into commercial office space right now. And, you know, there's a good chance we may wind up being able to buy a building down here for 25 cents on a dollar in the next three, four years. And in fact, the 110 East Broward building was in foreclosure six or seven years ago, and I approached the then-city manager about the city buying it. We could have bought that building for $40 million out of bankruptcy court.
Except it had a ground lease, don't forget that. It had a ground, they didn't own the land that they were, that it was built on.
Understood.
So that's why the value of the property was so low.
Right, but the, but the value of that building originally was 100 million, but when it went into foreclosure, because they didn't have enough tenants, because they have a parking problem there, which we don't have, because we own the parking garage directly behind it, we could have bought that note for $40 million. It was a missed opportunity, and I get it, it's because the city was not able to move fast enough and the private sector moved quicker on getting that. But there, there is going to be more opportunities like that. Again, the commercial real estate market, the commercial office market is collapsing for all the reasons that I just mentioned. Again, return to work hasn't worked. People are not coming back to offices. Nobody wants to drive downtown, struggle to find parking, and deal with all that congestion when they can work from home. And that's not going to change. If you can, if you've got people coming from Western, working in downtown Fort Lauderdale, and they've got an hour and 15-minute commute, staring into the sun as it comes up every day, if you haven't done that, try it sometime and tell me how much you like that commute coming from the Western suburbs. It's not fun. So.
Okay. Okay. Commissioner Beasley-Pitman.
Yes, good afternoon. Thank you for your presentation. I did attend maybe two of the reimagine city hall conversations that we had in the communities. And you all captured what was presented at those meetings, so I know where the information derived from. What I did say, and I'm still saying, I believe, what was missed in those conversations was the voice, or is the voice, of the millennials, Generation X and Alpha. And being that we are preparing to put up institution that's going to be in place for the next 60 years, and we know we won't be getting the majority, and when I say we, the city commission and many of us who are sitting in the audience today, we won't be those individuals who are actually accessing, utilizing the building that's being placed. At those meetings that I was at, I was really disappointed that we did not have that input. But we did reach out to get the input. So, understanding you work with what you were presented with, I would love to see us also work out of that box, because I believe we're boxed in with the input that was shared, because there's so much more, pointing out some of the things that John has shared to the conversation. I don't know if that's been considered with what's being presented, but this is a, the presentation, I do appreciate it for what was given to work with, and let's see what the other commissioners have to say. And thank you for your service. A lot of work has gone into this, and I appreciate what you've done. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Great, thank you. Vice Mayor.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Again, I also want to say thank you very much. I enjoyed our session. I don't know if you had a chance to speak with the entire commission throughout this process, but I certainly enjoyed the give and take. I will disagree vehemently with Commissioner Herbst's take on this. I think that you are much closer to where we need to go than what he is pontificating about. I believe that it is really important to go in the direction that you've established. I agree with what you are saying in terms of what we have to do for future. I like all of these components. And actually, I went back and I looked at all of the excellent work that the Infrastructure Task Force did with our community. Lot of similarities, actually. You've covered a lot of the bases, you've covered a lot of the wants and the desires. of the bases. You've covered a lot of the wants and the desires that I saw when I read, and we had that presentation from the ITF. So I do see a lot of common ground between your work and the work of the Infrastructure Task Force with also the expression from the community. I think you have actually captured what I've been hearing from folks in the community in terms of what they want to see as a city hall. We have to build something for the future, and I, and I think you've recognized that in terms of the spaces, in terms of how they have to lay out, in terms of how this building and how the open space have to reflect our community, and how our community can participate. Everything from just citizens coming and using the, you know, facility, also incorporating our local talent, our local artists. I think it should be a place where people can gather, where there should be spaces that people can inhabit. This is our city hall. This is the home of the people, and it has to reflect that, and it has to reflect what Fort Lauderdale is. Fort Lauderdale is not a scattered place where we're just going to have a service over here and a service over there, and another thing over here, and something over there. No, this has to be how you have presented it. It has to be a central location. It has to be a place that people can access easily. It has to be near all of the transit that we are developing. This has to be a transit-oriented development, which I think you have captured. It is what it will be. This area where we are right now and where this new city hall will be is a place of the future. We know what's coming on Broward Boulevard. We know what's coming all around this area, and we have to participate in that, and we have to anticipate that. And I think you've done a good job capturing that. Is this, this obviously is not a site plan, but it's a good blueprint, and I am much more inclined to go in this direction than the direction that Commissioner Herbst is expressing. I don't have those same sentiments about the workforce and where people want to work and how people want to work. I just don't see that. And some of those other doomsday scenarios from other cities, that's not Fort Lauderdale, and it will never be Fort Lauderdale, because we are just not those places. So we have to build something that reflects what we are and the direction that we know that our city is going in. And a lot of those places are cities that have been struggling because of policies and practices and just economic conditions that we do not share with those cities. So I'm much more optimistic. I'm much more bullish on our city and the success of our city and what the people in our city want, and I believe that you have captured that spirit and where we need to be, and I say thank you.
Okay, great. Commissioner Sturman.
Thank you very much. Well, John and Steve, well, all my colleagues, Pam, Dean. John, you've worked here for many, many years, so I do respect your, your opinion. I do respect your take on this. You have more experience than any of us working within the city for all these times and how, all these years and how the city works. With that being said, also, Steve, I do respect you, some of your thoughts. I do like the idea of activating downtown, open spaces, park spaces, wherever you could add some of that, making it inviting. I mean, as that core grows, as that core in downtown grows, people are going to need a place to congregate, you know. Maybe there is, you know, for museums, for open space, for green space. That being said, I would, is there anybody from the Infrastructure Task Force that is here?
Yes.
Oh, the chair people. Okay. Would you like to come on up?
Well, they're going to have their chance to talk. Yeah, they're going to have their chance to talk. You have your chance to talk now, and then I'll call them up.
Okay, so my question for them is the same thing for you. Have you, have you interacted, I mean, I know you've attended their meetings. Have you interacted with them? In addition to that, have you gotten their input? I mean, how close have you worked with, with what they are doing? Go ahead.
We've attended every Saturday meeting, and we've interacted to the extent that we can. We did want to formulate our own opinion, so we didn't follow in suit with anything, but we did, we partook.
Okay, so at some point, Mr. Mayor, I would like to get the feedback from, from the task force. It's back to you, Dean.
Okay, very good. So I'd like to hear from the, there are just two people have signed up to speak. Jim, did you want to sign, did you want to speak also? Just Marilyn Maman and Jenny Morhohn? So Jenny, would you like to come up and speak?
I'll be brief. I sit on the advisory board for the Southeast Florida Caribbean District Council for the ULI. I've been involved with ULI for probably about 13 years, and I appreciate the efforts that through advisory boards, through the Leadership Institute, that they have taken in partnering with the city, going back as far as the 80s with giving guidance on the beach, Hizinga Park, and most recently from a volunteer effort, pro bono work on behalf of this team. So really, leadership from ULI could not be here today, so I volunteered since I'm down the street to stand in and just say, you know, thank you to this team. These are mid-level career professionals, as we mentioned, so they're bringing their expertise and their enthusiasm. They ultimately will be advocates for success of this community, and I think as they see here today, policy decisions, leadership from elected officials takes many perspectives and viewpoints, and that's really how you build cities. So just on behalf of leadership at the ULI, our advisory board, and the community, we thank you. On behalf of the DDA, we also wanted to thank Laura Reese, Marilyn Maman, and Cheryl Dickey, who came to a recent DDA board meeting to give us an overall update on the efforts that the city's taking, and certainly, we stand ready to work together with the city as improvements get made for city hall in downtown. So thank you.
Great. Thank you, Jenny. Marilyn?
Hello, Mr. Mayor, members of the commission. I am, as you know, the Chair of the Infrastructure Task Force Committee. I'm not speaking on behalf of the committee because we have never seen this. We have just, I just read about it on the, over the weekend. I'm very familiar with the ULI work, and they do fabulous work, but I think that the charge that they were given was rather limited. The Infrastructure Task Force looked at this in a much broader perspective, and we suggested to you that there needs to be ongoing conversations. This is a premature decision. It may be the ultimate decision. I don't know. It's up to you eventually in the next commission, but this is a premature decision at this moment. I think there are more input that we need. As Commissioner Beasley Pittman said, we need to bring in a group that we never had a success, we didn't previously have success bringing in.
They weren't at the table.
Yeah. So we have to do that, and we also suggested to you that there be a continuing discussion with the business community. I mean, there are a lot of stakeholders here who have something to contribute to the discussion about what is the correct site. This is one site. As Commissioner Herbst says, they did not look at anything other than city-owned sites. So when you look downtown at city-owned sites, this is where you go. Okay? There's nothing else that you can do. So, but there are other possibilities in the downtown area. Some might pan out and some might not, but we haven't had that discussion. And so when I was here the last time with you, talking about our recommendations to you, our principles, we said you should keep this discussion going and broaden the circle. Look at all of the possibilities in downtown. We agree downtown, that for all the reasons that they said downtown is the place to go. So I would thank them for their work, and I think that there are a number of programmatic issues that they bring up that we didn't get involved in at the time, like should it be consolidated? Should it be everybody back here? Their suggestion that you bring 800 people back here, that's a lot of people. That's a lot of space. That's a lot of cars to park. Those are discussions that the next commission is going to have. I mean, you're going to be workshopping this for months about making decisions about, are we bringing everybody back, or are we going with more, a more hybrid approach? You can do it. I mean, it's not, it's not preordained that you have to bring everybody back. You could decide, well, we're not. We're going hybrid. Okay? That's the way, but these are decisions and discussions that I think you should have when the dust settles over the election, and we all have, you know, you have enough time and enough gravitas to grab them. I had suggested, and I think Susan, city manager, had suggested, not suggested, but agreed, that what we need now is we need a real site selection search. Okay? We need a person, a planner, someone who can look at the broader range of opportunities. Bring them to you. Bring them to the next commission, so that you will have all of the options around you, public, private, federal, city, county, whatever, and that the public will have an opportunity to see all the things that you considered, so that when you do make the decision, everybody's coming along. There will be people who will not come along, but there will be the opportunity for people to follow this process, so that when you get to the decision, whatever the decision is, you will have as much community buy-in as possible. So again, the, this was, this was excellent work, given the, the charge that they were given, but I think that we need to now move on to the broader discussion, and we may come back here, but we're not here now. So I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Okay, very good. All right.
Thank you.
Very good. Thank you. Just a couple of comments. First of all, again, thank you for your tremendous work. We think, I appreciate all the amount of time you put into this, first of all, going to all these workshops and participating and listening to what people have to say. It gets very complicated and a lot of moving parts here in terms of site selection, you know, who's going to be using a building such as this, and just, just, you know, financing and all those things. It's, fortunately, we've been working on this for a while, and so we're getting closer. We have, we know what the options are and what the options aren't. So at least we, we're not really, we're not at first base anymore. So, but let me just share a little bit with the folks here, my thoughts about the work that you've done and where I feel we can go from here. Excuse me. When, when I was first part of the task force that met with the county, when we were discussing a joint government center, at that time, we had identified that the amount of square footage that we would need was approximately 150,000 square feet. So your analysis showed that we needed quite a bit more, like, what does it say, 230,000? 280,000, which is almost twice as much. So, so we would have to examine that and see where that number came from. If anything, based on what I've also heard on the, on the commission, maybe that should have been shrunk from the original 150 because of new work habits that have post-COVID has taught us, and new techniques and new technologies that have allowed us to, to perhaps work in remote locations. I'm not of the belief that people are best and most efficient when working in remote locations. I think it's been shown in many studies since COVID that not working collaboratively has been dysfunctional and often counterproductive. So I do believe that we need to start to bring people closer together to work in workspaces because more gets done. But in terms of, in terms of the amount of square footage we need, so we need to dig down deeper into that analysis and see where we're going to go with that. In terms of location, a number of, a number of locations have been mentioned here today. I just want to throw out a couple that I know we've investigated and we're not going to be able to use as an option. For example, the federal building that the federal courthouse is vacating. We're not going to be able to use that as an option mainly because the federal government isn't ready. We met with them, and they're not even going to be able to talk to us about it for another five to six years at a minimum. And so that becomes unfortunate because it might have been a ready option for us, but they're not even ready to talk to us about it. So, so as far as a federal, as far as a city hall is concerned, that doesn't become an option. The 110 East Broward, I too have had conversations with the owners of that building. I too have seen their plans where they want to chop off some of that parking garage and, and they want to build a tower there on the back of the building, and, and want to take that real estate and trade it with us for the corner piece that they have there. Interesting concept, might be workable, I don't know. Certainly a better location to locate a city hall tower because it's right on Broward Boulevard. It's a very strategic location, and certainly more prominent location for people to find where city hall is. So things like that, I think, still need to be discussed, and site location is important. I happen to agree and adopt many of the concepts that you talked about in terms of it being in the middle of population centers and commercial centers. People like to be able to interact with their city hall in a way that is close to them, within walking distance. So, and that's what we're building downtown. We have a new downtown, and some people may be working remotely, but a lot of people are walking to work because it's only two blocks away, three blocks away, and we're building what we dreamed of from 20 years ago. So, so I think that your, your presentation today has been really valuable. I think that your, you know, there's still some open questions about what's, what best works for Fort Lauderdale. I agree with the Vice Mayor in terms of, you know, the model that we see in some cities about the lessening use of commercial space may not necessarily be the model here in Fort Lauderdale. I'll give you another example of that. When we've been talking with the folks about the Galleria Mall, for years now, we've been talking with them, and they keep telling us, oh, malls are a dying breed, and no one's going to malls and so forth, and I say, really? Well, what about Dania Point, and what about Aventura, and what about Town Center? They all keep adding to their square footage, not taking away. Look at Sawgrass Mills. They keep adding to it. Tell me what you're talking about when you say malls are shrinking. Well, you know, Short Hills, New Jersey, it's shrinking, and Washington DC, it's shrinking, and San Francisco, they're shrinking. I said, yes, I agree with you. They're all shrinking in those cities because the populations are shrinking. So, so we have a different model here in Fort Lauderdale and South Florida, so we need to adapt to changing conditions here as opposed to looking to those other places as models for us, because we're not the same as they are. So again, I think we appreciate your continuing efforts to work with us, and thank you for all the work that you have done, and let's continue this dialogue. Okay? Great. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Commissioners. I just want to say.
Dean, can I, can I ask you a question?
Yeah.
I know, I know it's off the table, but just out of curiosity, when is the completion date for the federal courthouse? When will they be moving? Do you?
Probably another two years.
Okay.
But then there's a whole series of processes. They have to be, that's when the building may be finished, and then they have to move in, which is, takes another year, and then they're going to do their appraisal, and then after their appraisal is done, then they'll come talk to us. They won't tell us what the appraisal is. We had a meeting this past year. There's like 12 people representing various, various agencies within the federal government that were associated with that building, and it was a very disappointing meeting, trust me, because I was hoping we might consider that as an option, but they will not talk to us for at least five or six years. Yeah, I know. Anyway, thank you so much. We appreciate it.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Commissioners.
Before we close, Mayor, before we close.
Yeah, yeah, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Yeah, no, I, and to the team, by the way, I don't want to leave you with the impression that I don't appreciate the work you do. I've been dealing with ULI since I was in Jacksonville 25 years ago. Amazing organization. You do great research. I just happen to disagree with your conclusions, but that's a professional disagreement. I'm a CPA. I disagree with other CPAs all the time, and Lord knows I've disagreed with our attorney's office on many occasions when they accuse me of practicing law. So this is not, not to be a disparagement of the work that you do. Again, it's just, it's, I disagree with the conclusions. And Mayor, just a couple of points. So you talk about five or six years. I actually think that's a great idea if it takes five or six years for us to get to the federal courthouse, because I really think in the next five to six years, some of these issues relating to the workforce are going to be a little bit more apparent to us, right? As we move more into generative AI and general AI, we're going to see how this impacts the workforce more. We are facing what is referred to in the field as a singularity, which means we don't know what the future holds with these things because we have no baseline to project forward from. In five or six years from now, we're going to see how remote hybrid works itself out. We're going to know how AI begins to displace the workforce. So I'm not actually afraid of that. In fact, I think it's a great idea to wait five or six years and let some of these things come to fruition, because I think right now we are at a turning point in what work looks like, and I would actually much rather take a pause, wait that five or six years. We've got a workable solution right now, and then once we have a little bit more data to make a decision from, then we move forward. So I don't think that's a bad idea.
Well, wait a minute. Are you suggesting that we, we continue to exist under these circumstances for another five or six years?
Absolutely. There's no, no problem with renting for the five or six years.
I disagree with you there. I feel, I feel.
We can disagree, but I would rather rent for five or six more years than make what I consider to be a catastrophic decision. But a couple other points, too. You talked about hybrid work studies. If you've actually read the most recent ones, so work from home and return to work are both the lower productivity. The highest productivity in the latest studies, every single one of them will tell you, it's hybrid.
All right.
It's hybrid. Last thing, you talked about mall shrinking, but how somehow that doesn't affect Florida. You have not apparently been to other cities. So St. Johnstown Center up in Jacksonville is doing great. It's booming. It's growing by leaps and bounds, very similar to Dania Point. It's an outdoor mall. But if you go to But if you go to Regency Square, it's collapsing. If you go to the Avenues Mall, it's collapsing. There are malls around this country that are also trading for about 10 cents on a dollar. People who have invested in malls are losing their shirts. So to say that the malls are not going away is not a valid statement. There are a handful of malls that are doing well for a variety of reasons. Again, Dania Point is reflective of St. Johnstown Center, which is a new trend with the outdoor mall, which, you know, sort of recreates that neighborhood walking shopping experience. The indoor mall is dying.
Really? Aventura is dying? They just added several hundred thousand square feet?
I said there are a handful-
Bell Harbor is dying?
Town Center.
Town Center is dying?
The Galleria is dying.
We know the Galleria is dying, but that's by design.
It's not dying by design, it's dying because nobody shops there.
All right, I don't want to debate this right now, it's not the issue. All right. Thank you, folks, we appreciate your being there.
Thank you all. I encourage you all as well to read our written report, it's much more thorough and robust than this short presentation.
It is.
I think it'll address a lot of the points that all of you have brought up, not everything of course, but I encourage you to, to, to review that. Appreciate your time today, thank you.
It does, thank you. Thank you so much.
So Mayor, I have some questions for our city manager. I'd like to know about what are our next steps? Are we, what are we doing in terms of site selection? What are we doing in terms of thinking about an owner's rep on this project? What are our next steps?
So, so Mayor, the, the goal from today was to hear some feedback from the commission, which we did. We're going to take that back and put together a plan as far as next steps and present that on August 20th and, and you know, based on this, I'm thinking site selection is absolutely part of that process as well as owner's rep and there's some options as that goes as far as doing that outside or in-house. Anthony, did you have anything to add on that? That would be the plan.
Those are next steps.
Thank you very much.
All right, business two, this is a update on the Fort Lauderdale Police Headquarters canoe building. Who will be talking about that? Anthony?
Oh, there it is. So, good afternoon again, Mayor and Vice Mayor and members of the commission. Anthony Fajardo, Assistant City Manager, City of Fort Lauderdale. I'm going to be talking to you, give you an update on the police headquarters. We're going to be looking at a little bit of the project background just to reorient ourselves with where we were, how we got to where we are now, a little bit of the project status. We're going to be talking about the issue with the deflection that has occurred on the roof slab, some future considerations and then leave some time open at the end for questions if they weren't answered during the presentation. So as you may recall, in 20, in 2019, there was $100 million bond that was approved by the voters. In 2020, the city commission approved a contract agreement with AECOM for design services. In 2021, there was an RFP related to CMAR, which is Construction Manager at Risk with Moss and Associates. And in 2016, I'm, I'm sorry, 2016, 2022, the city commission approved the site plan. There was some additional costs associated with the police department based on the inflation rates that we saw, historic rates after our issues with COVID in the country. And there was a $45 million line of credit that was added to the overall $100 million bond. The CMAR was awarded in 2023 on February 21st for $118,998 and 390, $998,391. The groundbreaking was held in 2023. And this is for a 191,000 square foot building that's three stories tall and a 200,000 square foot garage in addition to a shooting range and the community center. So right now, we got a report from Moss that we are approximately 50% done with the project. You can see a breakdown of some of the different aspects of it, the headquarters building, the precast and the masonry block at 100%.
Anthony, do we have this in our backup? I didn't see this.
It wasn't provided in the backup because there's some information towards the middle of the slide deck that we were waiting to get from AECOM on the deflection issues.
We could go along with you or nothing's available?
We didn't print one out, I apologize.
Oh, could you go back to the last slide for one second?
Sure.
Okay, yeah, go ahead.
No problem. Again, so architectural precast and masonry block at 100%, roof and glazing at 80 and 75%. Drywall and elevator installation started in June and that's in the main building. The parking garage, precast and the traffic coding on the third floor of the parking garage is at 100%. Masonry block 95. Shooting range and stucco installation started in June and the main electrical room is ongoing. The site work, the FPL vault should be completed this month. Asphalt paving on the south side and utility tie-ins, I'm sorry, asphalt paving on the south side started in June, utility tie-ins and the temporary radio shelter, which I'll get into a little more detail in a minute, will start this month. Some notable upcoming activities for this project. So as I mentioned, the temporary radio shelter, as you all are well aware, there's a tower being constructed by the state of Florida just west of I-95. We plan on, in the long term, relocating our radio equipment to that tower, but in the interim, we procured a small temporary shelter to get the equipment out of the building. So right now, the, the radio equipment is still there, so we can't abate the building and we can't demo the building. So that's something that's being worked on now. We've, we are starting the process with the, the company Motorola to relocate that equipment. Eventually, abatement of the building will start and demolition of the building will start. We've also looked into doing revision to the site plan to allow us to maintain the existing holding booking storage facility that is on-site that was intended to be torn down with the main part of the existing building. And then utility work will continue, interior finishing will start and site work and that will get us to the end of the project. So the issue with the deflection. So as you see on the screen, in March of 2024, an RFI was issued, R5435, that alerted us to the deflection issue that Moss was seeing on the site. A meeting was held, well, and that deflection issue was found because some of the precast materials would not fit on the side of the building where they were sized for those openings. And there were cracks forming along the roof of the slab along where the, the support beam is. A meeting was held with Development Services, I'm sorry, Building Services for immediate actions. Basically, no work in that area, submission of any testing and reports and, or, and any plans to address this. And I'm going to get into a little bit of how it was addressed initially and then we have experts here who can talk about any of the technical details as well as what they came up with as a supplemental. So AECOM and Thornton Thomasetti, Thornton Thomasetti is the engineer of record, they are sub to AECOM for this project and they developed initial corrective measures. However, those corrective measures didn't seem to correct the problem. We were still seeing about a 3/16 of an inch deflection, which basically means it bent down just about 3/16 of an inch, where it cantilevered over that north end against Broward Boulevard. So to try and address this in a more holistic fashion, we felt it would be a good idea to bring in Lactis Yohalem Engineering as a third-party outside engineer to validate what Thornton Thomasetti was doing and looking at and to offer any supplemental recommendations for improvements to address the deflection. Those were generated by LYE, the design team, Thornton Thomasetti and AECOM collaborated on the recommendations and then on June 28th, this past Friday, the design team and LYE held a meeting and basically, from what I understand, met all day and came to a consensus on how this can be addressed. I want to orient you a little bit to where this issue is taking place. So this is from the site plan, the top of the screen is north, that's Broward Boulevard. The orange line, please forgive me, the orange line is not to scale, but it's approximately where the deflection is starting to occur and the arrows are where the deflection is happening itself. So past that orange line point is where the dip is starting to happen, where the bend is occurring. These are images of some of the cracks that were identified on the roof slab, so this is standing on the roof looking down.
Looking over it?
No, 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 this is standing, the standing and pointing the camera down and looking, they're right along. You're looking down, yeah, so you're on the roof at this point. So these were the initial improvements that were meant to address this issue. So on the left-hand side of the screen, what you see in gray represents the original structure. So that part of the slab that's overhanging on the right side of that left-hand image is the north end of the building. Those columns that were added in red were meant to provide additional support to correct for the deflection. What you see on the right-hand side of the screen is what they did for additional foundation work. The dark gray area, the, the column and then the dark gray at the very bottom of that image represent what was already there. And what they did was they saw cut the slab of the floor, excavated the area down to the originally poured slab, put in additional rebar cage and then filled it with concrete. So that took time to install, that took time to cure, it was about 28 days. So until these were put in place and we had an idea of, of what it were working out was taking about a month.
Is that going to change the architectural integrity of the building?
So I will, I have a moment here, while I'm going to defer over to AECOM to come up and answer a question like that, so I would prefer that they, they respond to that.
So are they adding columns or just reinforcing existing columns?
So what you see in gray on the left were the original column widths, what you see in red is what they added to it, but they only did it at this point on this floor, so the third floor. And then to transfer that load down to the ground is the excavation work and the additional foundation work you see on the right-hand side of the screen.
So they're just creating more of a support underneath the, the roof? Are they putting anything more in the, in the roof itself to, you know, this is not rocket science. I've seen buildings all over the world built 1,000, 2,000 years ago that are not cracking, okay? So how this ever happened, I don't understand, but I do know that there is a way to reinforce the overhang by putting more infrastructure in the, in the floor itself that's cracking. Here, you're just putting something underneath and hope that it holds.
Right, so this was the initial design to correct for this, but the additional enhancements that you'll see in just a little bit?
Uh huh.
Talk about exactly what you're mentioning.
All right, let's see that, I'm sorry.
No problem. And just to give you an idea, if you haven't driven by the site in a while, you can see this from Broward Boulevard, this is the additional shoring that was added. So what you're seeing is a shoring from the ground up to the bottom of the third floor and what you probably can't really see because some of the glazing had been installed before the, the detection of the deflection, rhyming, is additional shoring between those floors. So the idea is to give it the proper support, so while we're putting in these additional enhancements, the building doesn't see any more deflection occur. So at this point, I'd like to ask Tim Blair with AECOM right here, sorry, to come up and he's got some slides that they provided to us yesterday and early this morning, so that's why it wasn't in your backup, but this will probably help answer some of those questions, Mayor.
Thank you.
I mean, it looks pretty, but it- And it's going to be beautiful when it's finished.
Okay.
So good afternoon, Mayor, Vice Mayor and Commissioners. So I wanted to just reinforce and augment the overview that Anthony gave you. The goal is to address any concerns and show you the path forward to resolution and to completion of the project. So-
If you can here. Just get closer to my column.
Introduce yourself again and tell them what you're going to show us.
Say again?
Introduce yourself again and tell us what you're going to do.
Sorry. Tim Blair with AECOM. What I would want to do for the Mayor, Vice Mayor and Commissioners is reinforce and augment, you know, the overview that Anthony was giving you, address any concerns and show you the path forward to complete resolution of the issue.
Okay.
So as a starting point, the Thornton Thomasetti has gone back and reviewed the structural design of the entire project. It's been reconfirmed, there are no additional design issues or concerns identified. Just, it's a baseline beyond the deflection, the cantilevered slab on the north end of the building. As a frame of reference, the design criteria for the, for the project is a risk category four design criteria, which is essential facility buildings. So it inherently significantly exceeds code minimum and includes enhanced safety factors. When the deflection was discovered at the cantilevered roof slab, Thornton Thomasetti advised that the structural analysis model did not factor in the weight of the precast panels.
Why was that? Why, why did it not factor in the weight of the precast panels?
It was a human error. So, you know, what, what happened Commissioner, not excuse, but just a fact, when we value engineered the building, if you recall, the cantilever was much more significant. That savings was $980,000, which was beneficial on the value engineering perspective, but during the redesign, the weight of the precast was overlooked in the model. So it created a moment on that cantilevered roof slab and it deflected beyond the safety factors in the code.
When you value engineer, do you bring in everyone on the team and take a look at every aspect so that you can make sure that, that the model would factor in the weight of the precast panels when you're value engineering?
Yes.
So what happened?
They forgot.
It was human error.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Anthony, if you can hear the next slide. So the initial remedial actions with Anthony went over and again, Mayor, to your point, what we actually did is we enlarged two interior columns and added a haunch. So from the exterior and visually, you will not see that. And then again, we increased the reinforcing for the foundations below those columns. We've continued to monitor the creep deflection of the roof slab and it is within acceptable tolerances. As Anthony mentioned, the overall, not initial deflection, but the settlement beyond has been 3/16 of an inch. What you were seeing-
Does deflection mean bending? Is that, is that what deflection means?
I'm sorry, sir.
What does deflection mean? Does that mean bending down?
It's, yes.
That's fancy word for bending down?
Yes.
Okay, all right. I just want to make sure I understood.
So the, the photograph you saw earlier, there are really hairline cracks that occurred above the beam, behind the cantilever. Those minor stress cracks are within acceptable tolerances. As Anthony mentioned, and this was the right decision, the city engaged the services of LYE as a third-party reviewer. And per the recommendation of LYE and the direction provided by the city, the shoring has been installed in the affected area below the roof slab.
When you, can we go back, can we go back? It says minors, minor stress cracks are within acceptable tolerances.
Right.
Now, can those cracks, would they allow water to seep into those cracks?
They, so first and foremost, with concrete, the stress cracks are normal. In this situation, the finished roof will be installed above them. So if it was an exposed area, there's actions that would be taken to address your concern, you know, of water infiltration in the future.
Right.
But in this instance, it'll be encapsulated by the finished roof above.
So there will be no stress cracks then?
Mayor, I, I have a picture that might help you a little bit. Where did I see it? Okay, so see the white blocks in the, on the image on the right?
Okay.
So that is part of the roof system that goes on top of the roof to basically raise-
What? I don't see, I know you're trying to point, but-
On the image on the right, there's white blocks along the lower part of the roof and then on the ground.
It's on our left.
Lego blocks.
It's on our left.
On our left?
No, no, no. It's on our left.
Right, right, you're on the left, you're okay.
It's on our left.
Right. So, and I'm learning a lot with this project, right? So this is part of the overall roofing system. So you have the slab itself and there are people and experts in the audience that can definitely give you more information, but you have the slab itself, there's a liquid material, it's called lightweight concrete that goes on as well as these blocks, so it builds it up so that you can do the slopes to go into the drain system. Once that's put on, I'm told the roof will be totally sealed.
Okay.
And a membrane that goes on top of that. So there's, it's more system that what is on the roof now, because work had to stop in that area so that we could address this issue before that work was completed, because once it's covered up, you have more-
All right, it just seems like we're patching this up and, you know, if there's, if there's a sense of structural integrity that's being compromised through the presence of cracks, it makes one wonder, you know, is this going to be the final product and are we deserving of this kind of product after spending $150 million? So I'll let you proceed with your, with your presentation, but I just want you to know that question remains out there.
Absolutely. I just wanted you to understand that the system on the roof isn't complete and this is what it looks like. Okay.
So we, we can go back to that, Mayor, if, if we need to and talk about it more. So the window wall system along that northern edge, how we're addressing the deflection, they're going to notch an eight and a half inch wide strip from the bottom surface of the upper precast panels. And what that will allow us to do is to build in movement and sealant joints that are within industry standards. So that, so that we won't have any issues in the future with the window wall system along the north edge. As you can see, they've already installed the windows east and west and contending around As you can see, they've already installed the windows east and west and contending around the building. LYE issued their report on May the 31st. Thornton Thomasetti and LYE have been collaborating on reaching consensus on the design criteria and we issued our formal response yesterday. Thornton Thomasetti is finalizing the responses on the enhancements that were proposed by LYE. Both engineers have agreed to the following remedial actions to meet the design criteria and will show you that, which is what Anthony mentioned. In addition to the building out the columns and the haunch you saw, Mayor, we're actually going to provide two upturned beams on the roof, which again will further reinforce so that there will not be deflection in the future. The permanent roof has not been installed in that area, so it will not impact the installation of the permanent roof. So we'll make the adjustments with the upturned beams into the slopes, the insulation and the roofing membrane. There is consensus on the strengthening of the foundations. We're finalizing that between Thornton Thomasetti and LYE. There's also some ground floor columns that they're finalizing the strength calculations. There's agreement that cantilevered beams on the roof in the third floor will continue to exhibit normal deflection. This will happen over the next 57 months. Do not anticipate any issues, but it will be monitored collectively by both engineers.
So are you giving us a warranty for the next 57 months? Is that being built into this agreement?
We'll, we'll stand behind it.
A hundred percent?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Absolutely.
Okay. Bumper to bumper. Okay.
And if I may, and I don't want to confuse anyone, but what you're seeing on the left-hand side is really the architectural section and what you can see is the precast with the horizontal sunshade. You know, the measures we're talking about on the inside of the building or on the roof of the building, what you're seeing highlighted in yellow is what we're calling two upturned beams, which again will further reinforce.
Upturned beams?
Upturned beams. So what, what we're doing, Commissioner, if you can see on the right-hand side at the top.
So, so, so the left-hand side of that beam is affixed to the more stationary part of the building? So it holds up the cantilevered part?
Correct. So if you look at the bottom right, what you're seeing is a section through the existing beam.
Right.
And this will be added and you can see the reinforcing that will connect into that beam to augment the strength of the beam below.
Okay.
Okay. I'd like to make a couple of other comments if I may and then gladly answer any questions.
Okay.
Okay. I mentioned to you, you know, when the oversight happened, Commissioner Glassman, we're standing behind it and we're going to resolve it. You have a collective commitment from AECom and Thornton Thomasetti to reach consensus with LYE on any additional remedial actions required. You have the benefit of two competent structural engineers that are collaborating together to fully address the issue. Police headquarters is a complex project, no excuse, just a statement, that you have our command to run to trouble for any and all issues that happen to get to successful completion, both to the city, to the police department, the building department and all of the stakeholders collectively.
Okay. Any further comments, Anthony?
So I just wanted to let you know that we do have, in addition to Tim and AECom, we do have Thornton Thomasetti here. We also have Moss and Associates represented as well as our Building Services Division team. And I believe Lactis, Lactis made it. So we do have a variety of people here who can help answer any questions you may have. So this was kind of the point where we wanted to open up discussion just to let you know that the Building Services team, you know, we did just get the response and they met with us yesterday to talk a little bit about it. Building Services team has not had a chance to review that response, so we want that to occur. So there, there isn't an official position from the Building Services Department on what those enhancements are just yet. But those will be pending.
Okay, very good. So Anthony, if I may, so this evening we have some agenda items to deal with some issues and there's costs involved and I have the feeling there'll be more. So I just want to know what's happening going forward now with everyone. AECom, Thornton Thomasetti, LYE. Are we keeping a running tab now so that at the end of the day, all of these future expenses that we can relate back to this issue, we will be made whole?
We are keeping a running tab, so we, we have a cop, we are doing it through the process of change orders so that we show every line item that is related to any specific topic, whether it be the deflection or anything else. So what you'll see on the agenda tonight includes three things. One was the shoring, which you saw the scaffolding that was holding up the building. One was the additional materials that were involved in pouring the concrete and the added rebar and the work along with it. And then one was the scanning of the concrete to, to locate the rebar that's already within the concrete areas.
Was excavation part of any of that?
Yes, that's, that's the work I was mentioning. So the, you know, all the work that went with that to install it as well is all part of that.
Okay, so we are keeping that list. We're working collaboratively with AECom and Thornton Thomasetti and making sure that everyone's on the same page. So when we get to the end of the day, cut the ribbon, we're all in agreement that yes, this is how we are made whole as a city and all of these change orders will be compensated.
That is absolutely the intent. And I would like to say that, you know, it's an unfortunate situation we find ourselves in. No one wants to be here having to talk about this. AECom, Thornton Thomasetti, the Moss, they've all been really good at collaborating with each other and trying to figure out a solution moving forward. Unfortunately, the first solution didn't seem to work to the satisfaction that we were looking for. So they've been continuing to collaborating. So our hope is that we will get to that point very easily and then you'll have a building that the police department can be proud to live in.
Great, I think that's all we can hope for and ask for and it makes sense. And I'm happy to hear you're saying that everyone is working together on this and we're on the same page and going forward. And happy to hear that, thank you. Anyone else have any questions? We have one person who signed up to speak.
Mayor, I don't have any questions, but I do have, I do have a comment. I'm not in favor of trying to work out an engineered solution to this. I think we just need to tear this thing down and start over again. Because my concern is 10 years down the road, we have water intrusion into the building. We had a building that had nothing but mold problems. I just dealt with a fire station that was brand new and developed problems with the AC systems and mold and had to be shuttered for what I think the better part of four years while my firefighters lived and worked out of a, out of a trailer. And we've just finally reopened that station. For the price we're paying for this building, I don't want a patched up job. And that's what this sounds like to me and I find that unacceptable. I think we need to tear it down and start over again. There are examples within the school district where they had construction defects and tore it out and started over again. I think that is the only long-term solution because 20, 30 years from now, unless you're putting up a performance bond that's going to stay in effect, companies go out of business. We've seen this happen before. So companies who have done work where we come back and, and we try to enforce a warranty and there's no company to enforce the warranty against. And I'm worried that down the road, we're going to be experiencing problems and we may or may not have anybody that we can hold accountable. So unless there's some way that you can guarantee me and provide some assurance that, again, 20, 30 years from now, somebody's going to back this up when these windows leak and we start having mold problems and health and safety of my officers once again is being impacted, I can't support, again, a patched job.
Okay. Thank you. Let's see, Nanakayara, Nana Yakara? That's you, sir, okay. Did I pronounce that right? Okay. You're part of the team. So you signed up to speak, okay. Anyone else wish to speak on this item?
I do have a couple more slides, Mayor, if there's no one else.
Please go ahead.
I can move forward. So regarding the pending change orders that are on tonight's agenda, I just wanted to touch base on this a little bit to kind of give you a preview. I'm sure you've all read it. But we have some change orders associated with some additional services that we asked for as.
These are, these are at our request.
These, most of these are at our request. The roof deflection ones were, you know, to address that. But, so for instance, with Moss and Associates, there were additional permit costs that were associated with changes to the permits as required by Florida Building Code Review to comply with those aspects. There were designs for the lab, the walk-in freezer, the, the walk-in refrigerator and the fume hood that needed to be done, as well as the kitchen equipment for the cafeteria. There was a gap in the security cameras, so the police department asked for additional cameras. And there was a coating for the third floor of the parking garage designed to protect the parking garage from the elements that wasn't installed, so we, we asked to have that installed. For, and then you see the items for the deflection that I mentioned earlier, which are the line items I responded to the Vice Mayor on. For AECom, we asked them to do additional commissioning services. This is to make sure that the lab hoods and the air conditioning system all function correctly. So we hopefully don't have the issues that Commissioner Herbst brought up. Additional site inspections, those are associated with threshold inspections. So at any given point during the construction of a project, you have structural inspections that need to happen to make sure that the concrete and the rebar was poured and put in the way it was supposed to and designed.
Aren't these part of the original agreement?
So typically, they would have been. There were discussions that quite frankly predate me being part of the project and some of those people aren't around anymore. There were part of the value engineering process to remove some of these things from the contract and then do it at, with either services that we had in-house or procure outside services. When we, the person that helped draft the contract with AECom, I think smartly put in optional services that we could avail ourselves of. We didn't feel as a staff that we had the ability to procure these services and get them online with the speed that the project was moving. If you remember, and you know, there was a lot of compliments on, on the pace that Moss was going, after groundbreaking, it moved very, very fast. And in order to keep that project schedule, we felt it was the better part of valor to go with the services that were through AECom. So we would have had to pay for them anyway. We just did it through AECom rather than another method. And then this, I think it's pretty much self-explanatory. Addition to coordination services, interior design and finishing, and then building envelope inspections, which I think I mentioned already.
Okay, any questions of Anthony?
Got two more slides. Two more slides and then I'm done. So, future considerations. So we are out of our contingency. I'll get into a little bit more of that detail in just a second on the next slide.
We are what?
We are out of our contingency. We have spent the $2 million that the city had in contingency.
Okay.
Anthony, I'll just add though that that doesn't mean, there's still money in the project, in the project fund.
Yes, there's still money in the projects, just the funds associated with our contingency are almost at zero.
Which was very slim to start with.
Right, and I'll show that on the next slide. We mentioned earlier that we have requested to retain the holding. I, I put in a holding storage facility, but it's also the booking facility that PD uses. The radio tower relocation, that's pending and we are still working with the state on when they are going to start construction so that we can move that over. Again, the owner requested changes. We had talked to the police chief and the fire chief about doing a backup EOC location in case something happened catastrophically at our current EOC location. So not a full-blown EOC, but something that we could occupy if there was, if there was a need. The community center, I want to emphasize, we are not redesigning the space. So the walls, the roof, the floors, everything's in the same space. But in order to use it for a, a board and meeting space, as you see, there's a lot of IT equipment, there's a lot of AV equipment, so we asked them to look at that as well. The garage coating, I already talked about, and the security cameras, I already talked about.
Do you recall off the top of your head how many square feet the community center is?
I want.
5,000?
Yeah.
5,000 square feet?
Yeah.
I'm just wondering, if this ever gets finished in a timely fashion, if we could use this for our meeting space for the city commission?
It might be suitable for that. It would definitely be suitable for some of the smaller boards and committees, possibly PZ, possibly special magistrate.
Well, we're not 5,000, are we 5,000 square feet here? No. No. We're about three, right?
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not sure.
Would that be something for security purposes, something that would be open to the public?
Yes, the intent is it would. I mean, the community center was always meant to be a, a public amenity.
Hence the word community.
Continue, please.
And then construction administrative services through AECom to continue. Again, the deflection, we have the supplemental, the new supplemental designs. If the city decides to move forward with installing those, there will be additional design and materials and work associated with that. And then of course, the lease agreement at 1515 is ongoing and that's coming out of the project budget.
Let me stop you right there. Go back to the deflection design and all those other things. So that's not on our dime?
No, what I mean is we would have to pay for the work to get done and then we would recoup any, any costs associated with that. So I apologize if I wasn't clear, but the, we, we're asking Moss, we'll be asking Moss to implement that work and procure those materials. So we've got to pay them for.
Why doesn't AECom pay Moss directly? We should not be a conduit between AECom and Moss for any construction, I'll use this word lightly, errors.
Yeah.
I, I don't want to be fronting money and then having to go and collect it from somebody else for mistakes made on their part. So I'm adamantly opposed to that.
We will definitely explore that and see what options that we have. And so we think we're going to come back for a budget amendment after the break. Just a heads up. So you can see up top that the, our, like I said, our contingency funds have been depleted. We're only, there was $4 million in contingency, $2 million on the city side, $2 million on construction with Moss. The industry standard is up to 10%. That would have been pushing $12 million in total.
Let me, let me jump in on you there too, though. So the whole idea, though, this is CM at risk with a GMP. So we should have a thin contingency, right? I mean, that's the whole point of a GMP, is guaranteed maximum price.
Again, we only want to replenish on our side, not the construction side. Their GMP is their GMP. What they've got is what they got. So if, unless anything changes per the contract standards that would require renegotiation of the GMP.
And therein is the problem, because if we didn't spec enough of this stuff out in the original RFP, shame on us. Because we should have known about this stuff to a certain extent. Some of the things that we've talked about in terms of the owner's changes should have been, you know, we go through very extensive conversations when we're doing design build. The whole idea behind that construction delivery model, instead of doing design bid build, is a coordination between the city and the designers and the, and the builders so that everybody's working together on the same page so that there's no surprises as we get down the road. Hence my, my, my challenge is with surprises as we get down the road.
Understood. I don't like them either, just for the record. So replenishing the contingency fund will be something that will be coming to you. We also need to replenish the funding on the project. So right now with these POs that are coming through for the related items on tonight's agenda, we have about $8 million in unencumbered funds that those are going to hit against. However, there are other POs coming behind them in the next 60 to maybe 90 days that we'll need to address. And so it'll be important to have funding available when, when those come forward. And then for, and, and excuse me, Commissioner, any other unanticipated issues that come up, our goal is not to spend the additional contingency funds. I know just, we don't want to, but we do feel like we need it in place. And of course, we would come back to the commission for movement of any money that hits that threshold. The radio tower, now I have it up here that funding may not cover the entire cost of the radio tower. However, Laura was able to identify that we had about, I think, a little over $4 million budgeted in FY '25 for the radio tower relocation, as well as another $3 million in CIP. So we're anticipating that's going to cost about $7 million to do the ultimate relocation. That would include new equipment that does all the new bells and whistles that everybody wants in, in PD and Fire. But we think we can cover that, so that's a little misleading on the slide, I apologize for that. And then again, again, the continued lease payments for 1515.
Can I just say something? I feel like there's a bait and switch going on here between the commission and those who are recommending these, that we cover these costs. I'll tell you why. First of all, the whole idea of building the new police station on this site was to be near the tower so that we wouldn't have to move the tower because we knew the expense would be a lot. And now you're telling us it's going to cost $7 million to move the tower and now we're told we should build, we need to move the tower. So the whole idea of building the police station here makes no sense, number one. Number two, this goes back to building, building the police station here on the existing real estate because we were told that we would not have to relocate the existing operations because they could work concurrently. That, of course, went out the window as soon as the first nail was hammered into the wall. And we were told, oh, the police can't work in this environment. So we had to relocate them completely, costing us millions of dollars or will cost us millions of dollars because we had to relocate, relocate them remotely. So I'm getting a little, I have to be honest with you. This is getting very frustrating for us to have to continue to foot millions of dollars worth of costs that we were told we would never have to incur. And now you're telling us that, oh, we hope not to use. And now you're telling us that, oh, we hope not to use any more of the contingency money. Well, contingency means not to use that money, but only in emergencies. Now we're having to, not only do we use the contingency, but we have to add to it. And then you're saying, well, we hope we don't have to add to it anymore after that. So, there's got to be a cap on this, okay? And you can't keep coming back to us and saying, oh, we need more money, we need more money. We have no more money, okay? So, and we're not going to borrow anymore, and there's got to, and this whole thing with the, with the crack in the building, you know, I don't agree with going to the extreme measure of tearing the whole thing down, but there's got to be a point where the people, this community, community can feel comfortable that its city commission is doing the right thing and making the right decisions based on information that we're getting all along the way. This tower thing is, really blows me away, that we have to now move the tower when the whole point of building this where we are is because of the tower.
So, Anthony, can you just maybe talk about the fact that it's not actually moving, well, someone else is paying for the movement of the tower. This is the movement of the equipment?
Yeah, so it's the purchase of the new equipment.
Wait, wait, say it again?
So, purchase of the new equipment. So we want to go out for RFP to purchase new equipment. The current equipment is limited based on when it was originally designed. There's a feature called dual dispatch that is common, I think, among emergency services now that our equipment can't do. So, it's, in all likelihood, we would have had to purchase new equipment anyway, and that's the bulk of the cost.
But this says "radio tower relocation." Is that a misnomer?
No, because, and I wasn't part of those conversations, but it was always, it was always my understanding that that was always part of this initial design, was to get that tower relocated, get that equipment relocated off that tower, take it down and put it on the new state tower.
And when, and when were you going to let the commission know that? I've only been on this commission for, I don't know how many years. This is the first time I've ever...
So it was, it was in the plan since, yeah, the beginning, as far as the movement of the removal of that tower.
I would say if it's something the city commission wants to reconsider, we can definitely look at that and see if there's any cost savings, but you still have to deal with the equipment itself.
Well, all I know is, is it's not, you know, this is not carte blanche for this police station.
I hear you.
Right? And we need to be very careful with our money. And while I do, I did believe from the very beginning we needed a new police station, and we needed to enhance our abilities to maintain a, you know, 21st century crime responding operation. As crime becomes more sophisticated in this world and as it becomes more frequent, we need to be able to have the facility to be able to keep up with it. I do believe that, you know, there's a, there's a point beyond which we should not have to go. And, you know, every time we're being nickel-and-dimed here, and to the tunes of millions of dollars, there's no longer nickels and dimes. And I just feel that we, we need to put a cap on this at some point.
I do have some good news.
What's the good news? Is that another slide?
Save it for last. I'll try to make you smile. So there are two things in terms of the funding. We did a direct owner purchase program. So basically, what we did is we leveraged our ability for sales tax, to save on sales tax. We initially projected that we would save probably about $800,000 to $900,000. We've gone past that, I think right now we're a little past $1 million. So we did have some money there that we can put back into the project. We also have interest on the bond to the tune of about $4 million. Now, there's arbitrage that's got to be figured out, and that's something that I know that Commissioner Herbst and the city manager know more about than I do, but there are some funds there that we could leverage as well, so to help defray some of those increased costs.
What do you mean? Where does that $4 million come from?
It was interest on the bond that was in the bank, is basically what it was.
Which we did not spend.
Which we have not spent yet, yeah.
Okay.
Sorry, Richard, you're telling me, think about this.
The good news is, look how much money we're saving on sales tax. That means we've spent more money. We had to have spent more than we anticipated to have saved more.
It was not the intent to save the money and then spend it.
Back anyway, that's not good news.
Well, I just mean, in terms of dipping into the other resources that we have to provide funding, there are some options there that I'll leverage.
Okay, can I ask something a little unrelated that, Mr. Mayor, that you had brought up earlier? It's not quite on the financial side, but you were talking about reimagining City Hall. You toyed with real estate or in the proximity of the police station. Is there room to put a City Hall in there?
That's what John had recommended. I mean, we'll let the committee, community come up with some options for us, but, yeah. Okay, any other questions of Anthony? Thank you, Anthony.
All right, thank you.
Don't come back anymore.
We'll send somebody else up next.
Moving on to business three, park impact fees, policy recommendations. Is it on? Yeah, there you go.
There we go.
How are you?
I am great, and I have no bad news, so that's a great thing. While they pull up the presentation, so back in March, the city commission asked staff to come up with a recommendation on how we would standardize the use of park impact fees. The Office of Management and Budget got together with Development Services, as well as the Parks Department and the City Attorney's Office, to come up with a recommendation, which you'll see in this presentation today. And we hope that this is an opportunity for the city commission to provide us initial feedback on that recommendation. Before we get started, we really wanted to look at the state statute, which, in accordance with that statute, park impact fees are intended for acquiring, constructing, and improving capital facilities to benefit the new users. So really, those who are contributing to the park impact fees. In layman's terms, what this really means is that it's providing infrastructure to service the expanded population, and as such, those fees really can't be used for maintenance or operating expenses. Here are a few of our recent park impact fees. What you can tell in this slide is it really impacts districts across the city. Some of these projects are fully funded by park impact fees, whereas in other cases, park impact fees provided those extra dollars needed to complete the project that may have come over, in over budget. Here's a five-year history of the park impact fees that were collected. Commissioner Glassman, I know you asked, when we started collecting park impact fees, that was back in 2006. So we have been collecting park impact fees since that time. This is just a snapshot since 2020.
Why such a big drop-off this year?
This is year-to-date, as of May, so really, the fees are depending upon development, the permits that are requested, and this is just as of a point in time, so it's not the full fiscal year.
But it's a half a year, and the fees is only 10%.
Yeah, so it really depends on the permits that are submitted. So right now, in the park impact fee funds, we have $5.4 million that has not been allocated to a specific project. And this is just a snapshot of the funding source for fiscal year 2023. So this is that $6.8 million breakdown that you saw a slide or two ago. And the full details associated with these fees are in your backup. So here's our recommendation. The first part starts with looking at the funds that are currently in the park impact fee funds, which is that $5 million. We have a few signature parks bond projects that will likely need additional funding. These signature projects are really intended to serve the citywide population, and they're intended to be designation, signature parks that really you go to as a destination. And that's Lockhart Park, Holiday Park, Carter Park, and Tunneltop Park. And so our recommendation is that existing fees go towards supporting any cost overruns associated with these projects. The second part of our recommendation is, beginning October 1, 2024, which is our new fiscal year, that 50% of park impact fees that are collected are designated for regional parks, so those citywide parks. And then 50%, the other 50% goes to the district in which the fees were collected. So here's a good example.
Wait, before you go there, how is that consistent with your first slide, in which said, "Ensure the impact fee is proportional and reasonably connected to the expenditures of funds collected and the benefits accruing to the newest, new construction." Wouldn't the, wouldn't the park money have to be spent by those who are affected by the new construction?
Yeah, so what we believe is that those regional parks, those destination parks, really do service the entire community, including new people that move into the area. So they get the benefit of those really expansive parks in addition to the parks in their local area.
Well, the thing is, if a, let's say a building is built on the beach, and that you collect $500,000 in parked impact fees, and you say, hey, we need $500,000 for the Tunneltop Park, do you think the people on the beach really care about the Tunneltop Park? They're the ones that are being impacted by the new construction. Now they don't have the benefit of money to provide for open space or some kind of, some kind of mitigation that would somehow ameliorate the impact of the new construction. You see what I'm saying?
Yeah, definitely so.
Mayor, that's been an argument for 20 years and more, ever since I can remember on the beach.
So I knew I heard it somewhere.
Yeah, when some of us actually did serve in the neighborhood association, people always wondered, you have all of this development on the beach, and none of those park impact fees are remaining on the beach. They're going everywhere else.
All right, so we'll discuss it, but I'm just wondering why your recommendation is, let's take half of it away from those people.
And again, I will say that it's, you know, we're looking for your input on that today.
Yeah, yeah, I get that.
The Attorney's Office has told us that those regional parks do fit that bill as eligibility, and I just want to add that it's not, we can't just replace something. It still has to be an expansion, no matter what we do.
And Mayor, 50% is better than zero.
What's that?
50, keeping 50% in the district is better than not keeping any of it, zero, having it all go out.
I, I know the math. I know the math.
Good, just want to remind you. I do have a question, if you could, because when you say regional parks, if you could just go back to that slide, so are the regional parks only those four signature parks from the Parks Bond, or are there others?
So these are the signature parks in the Parks Bond. So these were those landmark parks that were highlighted when we were advertising the Parks Bond.
So how do you define regional parks? Because you said the 50% would go to something defined as regional. And if you could go back to that other slide, I just wanted to make...
So, regional park is really a large park that serves neighbors citywide. And so there's some case law on this, and I'm sure the City Attorney's Office can speak to it. But it's the idea that if a park can, is within 15 miles and is geared towards serving an expansive portion of the community, it's considered more of a regional park. So it's not like your neighborhood park.
How many miles?
15.
That's the length of the city.
Everywhere in the city, yeah.
So do we have a list of regional parks?
We don't have a specific list of regional parks, I don't believe.
Okay, because if we're saying that 50% is going to go to regional parks, we should probably have a list.
Well, remember, this is for, in the future, for expansion, so it would be as we grow and develop, we would then decide if there are any additional parks we'd want to add to the Parks inventory.
And we could include that, once we get some feedback from you when we come up with this policy, we can include that, the initial list.
No, that'll be helpful. And just to note, that photo does not correspond to any of the four parks on the slide, so I would probably replace that photo.
Definitely.
That's La Sola's Oceanside Park, which is not any of those four on the slide.
We just wanted to make sure you were following along with us.
I think the reason that's there, Vice Mayor, is, and I actually had this question not too long ago, and I had a conversation with the Attorney's Office about this, because I saw that we were spending park impact fee money on some of the beachside parks. And they, that's when we first got into this conversation, or at least that I did, about regional parks, and that was determined to be one of the regional parks. Because of, you know, the rationale used by the Attorney's Office, and I'm trying not to speak on Tom's behalf, but, is that the beach attracts people from all throughout the city and therefore is qualified. Because I had questions about that myself, because a lot of the money that's been going into the park impact fee fund has really been coming from downtown right now. I mean, most of our new construction folks paying into that are in the downtown area more so than almost anywhere else right now. And I saw that that money was being diverted out towards the beach to complete some of those parks, and I was questioning the applicability of that, given the new state statute, which has changed throughout the years, requiring that nexus. And I didn't think there was a nexus, and that's, so I think that's probably why you're looking at that picture, is that was actually determined to be a regional park, even though it's not one of the signature parks.
I know, but the slide doesn't talk about regional parks, it talks about signature parks.
Understood.
Absolutely correct.
Thank you. Okay, before we move on, look at those parks. I mean, Lockhart, District 1, Holiday, District 2, Carter, District 3. Tunneltop Park? Seriously?
Well, that was from the Parks Bond.
I know, I know, but, I mean, maybe Snyder or something. I mean, for it's done, it's a patch of grass. I mean, if you're going to have, I mean...
It's not grass there.
No.
That's from the Parks Bond, that was the Parks Bond.
No, we, we need to think...
Artificial turf is very expensive.
We need to rethink number four, Tunneltop Park, for District 4. Give me, I mean, we'll, we will revisit this in a minute, okay? Can I tell you why that, this was before you became, came to the commission?
Right.
The reason why that was identified is because of the amount of money that was going to be necessary in order to fulfill its completion. And not because it was in any way comparable to Carter Park, for example, which is a huge football field, but, and then some. But it was because of the capital expense that was going to be necessary in order to complete the project.
Well, okay, here, let's, let's talk about this. Are we still committing more money at this particular point to Tunneltop Park? Or is this, this is historical, or is there more money?
It's up to us, right?
Being funneled to the tunnel. I mean, this is, this is, this should stop right now. The park's done, there's much more impactful dollars in District 4 than Tunneltop Park at this point. So, is money still going towards?
It's roughly $20 million roughly allocated into Parks Bond.
So I am not sure of the status of Tunneltop Park. I think Enrique is coming to talk about that.
The money that went to Tunneltop was partly from Parks, Parks Bond was partly from, these, all these, it was a mixture of funds.
Good afternoon, everyone, Enrique Sanchez, Deputy Parks Director. So Tunneltop Park initially had $5 million allocated in the Parks Bond. Shortly after it was passed, we got revised estimates, and that number came in closer to $10 million. And so, an additional $5 million was taken from an allocated portion of the Parks Bond and used for, so that Tunneltop could be completed.
Well, the, is, I mean, 10 million, means that the total cost or our contribution to that park? What was the total cost of that, do you have any idea?
For, well, so our, our contribution was for the park portion. FDOC contributed to all the work under the tunnel, the rehab, they were going to do anyway. So, the Tunneltop project kind of came along as FDOT was making improvements to the Kenny Tunnel, all the stuff that caused the lane closures, stuff like that. And so, the city said, well, while you're doing that, can we look at expanding the tunnel and creating some more?
Well, how about, I mean, in addition to that, there was like reinforcing the tunnel, making the footprint larger, you know?
That's what you're just saying.
But that's all part of the 10 million, or that's part, that came out of some of the, okay? And is it, it's a, at this point, we're, we're not spending more money on that park, are we? Or is it done deal?
No, not, not capital.
Unless you want to buy impatience.
No, 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 I don't, if there's more money coming in, I don't want it to go to Tunneltop Park in my district. There's, there's better ways to...
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
All right, does that complete the, you still have more to talk about, right?
No, that's it, we're just seeking your feedback, whether or not you believe the 50-50 split is what we should be doing going forward and utilizing it as funding to ensure that we are able to fulfill those signature Parks Bond projects.
Andy, that, just on a related note, today in the, this evening at the budget amendment, we do have a request for some allocation of park impact fee dollars for...
D.C. Alexander Park, $500,000.
For D.C. Alexander?
Correct.
Okay, we have a couple of people signed up to speak, Ted and Sarah, and then Marilyn Maman.
Hello, everybody, my name is Ted, and Sarah.
How's our tree looking over there?
Yeah, I noticed on one of these slides, it mentioned, in River Oaks, it mentioned Stormwater Park. Now, I'm the president of the River Oaks Civic Association. I lived in River Oaks for 60-plus years. I have no idea what Stormwater Park is. I guess they mean by that is those pumps that they're building next to the River Oaks Preserve. Now, to call that a park now is more stretched than the Tunneltop Park. I mean, I'm not, I don't see people saying, honey, let's go have a picnic by the pumps. But, but the one thing that's really being ignored is the preserve. I mean, that is part of tonight's CM8 action with the Rickman paying back for their dumping and their environmental concerns, you know, in our area. It's the preserve, and it's, it's been closed down. It's a beautiful park that's now being ruined. We were supposed to have a kayak launching pad there. We were supposed to have a dog park there. And now, it is just being taken over by these pumps that are very necessary. And now it is just being taken over by these pumps that are very necessary. But I mean, they're just, that park is just being completely ignored. The water is, I would love to have samples done on that water. It's milky white, like the Trubidity, you know, like it was before. And with their construction runoff, which is right next door. But, you know, that, that's one park in River Oaks that, that is, it's a nice little piece of nature in the middle of a big community. You almost think like you're in the Everglades when you're there. Has the beautiful walkway, you know, the wooden ramps. So, and that is just, if it's not flooded, it's being overrun with the construction. And so eventually, we need to get that park, or preserve, which is very special to River Oaks, on some list to get help to get back to what it was at one point. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Well, Ted brings up an interesting question that, I mean, do you want me to wait till the end or comment on this now?
Yeah, listen, no, you, well, let's wait till Marilyn finishes.
And I'll wait till the end and then ask, okay.
Hello again, Mayor and Commissioners. My name is Marilyn Mamanu. I'm the president of the Harbordale Civic Association. I'm speaking on behalf of my civic association. You are discussing, and this is my testimony, which I will read into the record, thank you. You are discussing establishing a policy for the allocation of park impact fees. Currently, there is no official policy, and the fees are used in any park where a fundable project is located. A fundable project being an infrastructure capital outlay related to servicing expanded population. In the past, these projects were distributed all over the city at the discretion of the commission. I agree that that is problematic, and a policy is not a bad idea. However, have you told anybody in the neighborhoods about discussing a new policy? Have you had any discussions at the Parks Advisory Board and the council? That's a loaded question. I'm assuming that eventually we will get to doing that, because this is a beginning discussion, but that's the place to have this discussion. The proposal is to take the current $5.4 million in the fund balance and commit them with no proportion specified to the four regional parks, Lockhart, Holiday, Carter, and Tunneltop. These quote "regional" parks were designated in the Park Bonds, in the Parks Bond for funding priority. We're playing with semantics here. These are not regional parks, they just happen to be called them in the Parks Bond rubric, okay? These are not...
They're signature parks.
Whatever. These were part of the funding in the Parks Bond. To call them regional parks is a misnomer, because they are not equal in size or function.
No, but the slide doesn't call them regional, it calls them signature.
And she said it's a whole bunch of other parks, too. Not just those four.
I don't want there to be a misunderstanding, because it's not a regional park, but go ahead.
Whatever you call these four parks, they are not equal in function and size.
No, they're not. They just cost a lot.
Is my, is my point, okay? The first three are very large recreational facilities, and Tunneltop is a small urban plaza. I am concerned that most of the money would go to the three large recreational parks and not Tunneltop Park, despite the fact that the majority of the impact fees are generated by increased development District Four, where I live and my community is. Instead, a fair proposal, I'm suggesting, would be to let each commissioner decide which park in his or her district would get the current fund balance. Some commissioners might choose their quote-unquote "regional" parks, and some might find more pressing needs in other neighborhood parks. Going forward, the proposal would allocate future park fund balance, 50% to the district where they were generated, and 50% to these regional parks. That sounds kind of reasonable to me, because as you said, at least 50% is going to stay in the district, which is not the current situation. However, and I do believe that the parks are fungible. I mean, the, people from District Four go to Lockhart, people from District Two go to Snyder Park. So it's some rationale, planning rationale, for dedicating a portion of them to the larger parks, whatever you want to call them, okay? However, however, I have the same concern. I mean, you can't spend any more money on Tunneltop Park. It can't get bigger, you can't add a soccer field. So I suggest that a fairer proposal would be to let each commissioner decide which park in his or her district would get the 50% of the future funds. Some commissioners might choose their regional parks, and some might find more pressing needs. So again, I commend you for starting this discussion. It's going to be a much broader discussion, but I suggest that you should leave the allocation of the funds, either the 50% or the current balance, to the discretion of the district commission. Thank you very much.
Okay.
Mayor, can I just comment a bit?
Yeah, please go ahead.
Marilyn, and I think my colleagues up here were trying to get to it, is the distinction between the signature parks that were used to sell the Parks Bond is completely and entirely different from a, a regional park, because, as was mentioned, and I'd like actually the city attorney to weigh in on this, there's case law as to what constitutes a regional park. We can't, I can't say that I think Lockhart is a regional park, because it's in my district and I want it to. And I agree, actually, I think this is a, a much more fair way to approach the entire issue. And candidly, my district will probably lose out on that, because we don't have a lot of new construction that's generating a lot of the park impact fee money. Again, most of that's coming from downtown. But I do think, when we do impact fees, the whole idea behind the legislation is that, and this goes back, you know, to when we used to have the Growth Management Act, that was actually robust, and you had to do a community improvement element, a CIE.
Oh, you're going back now.
I'm going back. I've been doing this for a long time. And the idea was that if we have new development, so we put up a 50-story building, you know, it creates a burden and an impact on that neighborhood. It also creates more demand for services, be it parks, or schools, or roadways, and everything else. And those developers have an obligation to help fund those amenities that make quality of life valuable. So as the Vice Mayor pointed out, we've had neighborhoods, Flagler Village being one, where there's been a lot of new construction, and the pace of parks' development has not kept up with all of the pace of construction. The beach, you saw a lot of that. So a lot of, again, all downtown, where all the new apartment buildings and condos have gone up through the years, have not seen a commensurate number of parks being built. So, so that's the idea, and I always think that the communities deserve the amenities that, you know, the, the new development requires, and, and the money should be spent there. I do think that whole nexus concept is important. But with this idea of regional parks, too, I do think has some value and some merit. But again, it's going to be more of a legal definition than what I, as a commissioner, I'd love to designate Lockhart and say, hey, that's a regional park in my estimation. But, Tom, why don't you kind of just discuss, you know, sort of where this is and how we go about establishing a regional park?
I'm going to have Duane answer this, because he worked it out, if you don't mind, Commissioner.
Before Duane, can I just comment on what you said? I appreciate you just making the distinction between the signature and the regional parks, okay? I, I believe that this proposal dedicating a portion of the process, of the funds to the region, if we could define what a regional park is, okay? I believe the nexus works, as a planner, I believe the nexus works. We'll be okay. I hope you agree, Duane. Thank you.
Duane Spence, Deputy City Attorney. So, so what we have here is the nexus of planning, legal, and budget, trying to come together and explain a concept and apply a legal concept. The term "regional" comes out of case law dealing with impact fees, that actually is a Broward County case, where Broward County was sued for applying impact fees to regional parks. And the court found that it was okay to apply these fees to parks that are within 15 miles of the development that's paying the impact fee. They called them regional parks, but it was a concept that these parks are used for a broader user base than, than just the folks in the immediate vicinity of those parks. So that terminology was explained to staff with regards to the case law, and because the case used the term "regional," that's why that was applied to parks that we consider to be signature or basically citywide. So the test here is that the park, based on our analysis, is used by users citywide. And we're using the case law, that the 15 miles in that Broward County case is a, a distance that justifies a citywide park impact fee expenditure from a new development at one of these signature parks. So we can use the signature park nomenclature from, from now on versus regional park. The nexus is in state statute and also case law, which regards to new developments that their impact fees should be paid as expenditures to parks that benefit those new users that their developments generate. And so the model that is being proposed to you in policy is already, well, not the exact model with the split, but the model that requires it to be expended to those who are benefiting is in our code. We do have it in the ULDR, it's codified. This distribution is the new policy, where they're asking you to agree whether or not this makes sense, whether, as far as the expenditures to benefit the new users. So it's, it's recognizing signature as a citywide, and then saying 50% would go to, to the commission districts. So I've been going a little back and forth, because I think, and to Ms. Mamanu's point, I think we need a little bit more data to support that. I do see a path to support it, in that our charter does create the districts based on population. And so each district is supposed to be of equal population, so it makes sense that our park requirement in our comprehensive plan is based on population. But we also have a part there that talks about distance as well, within a half-mile walking distance. And we want to try and marry those two or make those two work with regards to finding the nexus between the payers and the parks that they're funding.
Okay. Well, I just want to say, one thing. So I just think it's a little, it's inappropriate for us to use the Broward County case as a model for a city, because the county is much larger than, than the city, obviously, whether it be Lauderdale by the Sea, Fort Lauderdale, Cooper City, or whatever. And, and I think the 15 miles is a completely arbitrary number used by the court, so...
No, no, that, it was based on the study that Broward County did.
For county, for county purposes, right.
Correct.
Right. So it, I just don't think it applies to us. Now, I like the recommendation that Marilyn Mamanu suggested, she's no longer here, she walked, she stepped out, but to, to pass this on to the Parks Board and let the folks, let the advisory board come back to us with some kind of recommendations to the commission to respond to the presentation we just, we just were given, and let them come back to us with recommendations that, that they think might best fit the, the scale of, of the city. Because let me just tell you something. There, you know, for years, people did not go to, go to Holiday Park, but now they're going to Holiday Park. Why? Because functions have changed. The functions of Holiday Park have now changed. People are ice skating there now. And there are people that would often never go to Holiday Park. There are going to be people going to Snyder Park that before did not go to Snyder Park, but will, will once the pickleball courts are installed. And on and on. There were people, and there were, in Lockhart Park, Commissioner Herbst has recommended that we put pickleball courts there. You'll find a new pool of people who are going to go out to lock, that area of the city, who never before would have gone to that area of the city, because of the function of what's, of what we're offering there. So these things will change over time, depending upon the functions of these various parks. But, but I do think that we should, we should not be making any decisions today, because I think we should let the people decide, and let's start with the advisory board. So Commissioner Warren, Warren German, what did you want to say?
Thanks, Dean. Dean or Mr. Mayor, you're formal, you could, you're, we're formal, we're friends, we're buds, okay. I find myself agreeing with you, Dean, which happens quite often, by the way, more than you realize. Okay, so...
Don't get the habit of it, okay?
I mean, okay, go back to, I mean, we're looking at slide two. I mean, bullet number three, and I keep reading this over and over. Specifically, earmarked funds collected under the impact fees for use in acquiring construction or improving capital facilities to benefit the new users. As we did again, to benefit the new users. I mean, county 15 miles might, you know, it's one park every 15 miles, but the city is much more, much more compact. The city has, you know, a lot of traffic that are barriers for people...
I don't think the city is 15 miles long.
Right, so there's barriers, traffic barriers, there's bridges, things. So if you want to benefit, my, my thinking is, and I think, I think several of you have alluded to this, but I'll just be a little more specific. I mean, let's do away with some of the nomenclature. We don't have to use the word "signature," we don't have to use "regional," but who, the new users, where are they going to go? And I think the 50-50 split would be 50% to whatever is walkable, and the other 50% stay within the district. Because the people that are going to be using it, the new users, are going to probably walk to the park, and if not, they will drive to somewhere within the district. And, you know, you don't have to call it "signature," but we all know what is, what we consider each signature park within our district. And I think the other 50%, should, you know, the district commissioner or somewhere within the district decide within that district where that other 50% should go. And if, for some reason, the walkable park is less than 50%, the ballot should still stay within that district. That's, that's what I think we should do.
Okay. Anyone else wish to comment?
Just one request, and I don't even know if we have this information. Do we have a list that goes back to the inception of these park impact fees, of the projects that actually funded the fees?
So we transitioned from an older system into itsella about five or six years ago. So we readily have that information for who contributed for like the last five or six years. Before that, it's a lot more challenging to obtain.
So the answer is...
So we'll do some research and see what we can have.
I, I probably have an email going back to when Phil Thornburg was here. I'm pretty sure I have one, trust me.
Yeah, we'll do some research and see what we can find.
I've asked this question 10 times over the last 20 years, so yeah, I'm pretty sure I've got a list.
I think the park impact fees that were collected on earlier buildings, save the ones built on the beach, are probably already spent. So going forward, I think that this is money just recently collected, and there would be more recent projects.
There's $5 million and something in there right now, but if, if you could go back, I would just like to see that, how far you can go.
I remember when Lee Feldman was city manager, we used some of the beach park impact fee money on Riverland Road, if I'm not mistaken, to help buy that parcel on Riverland Road. And I raised the question, why are we doing that, for the very reasons that we were discussing? And that's when we came up with this regional thing. So, anyway.
But in the short run, can we not spend any more money on Tunneltop Park? As if I could at least agree to that.
So that's the one I've been waiting for. So Ben Rogers, City Manager's Office. So I just want to remind the commission, and that the old commission reviewed kind of the design, the conceptual designs for Tunneltop. And at that time, FDOT was on a strict timeline to move forward with the development of that. And so when we were going through, what should we do and how much will it cost with the last commission, one of the things that were taken out were some of the architectural, artistic shade elements, some of the signature functions of that space. And at that time, the commission made a decision to move forward with the base element package that you see today, with maybe a future commitment to come back and add some of those enhancements and elements there. So I just want to remind that, the commission, that that's kind of why Tunneltop was on here, and it continues to be on here, because what was delivered was, what was committed as part of the FDOT project, but maybe not the initial concept that was discussed to get at that point.
Ben, you didn't tell the district commissioner about the crack found at Tunneltop Park? Too soon? I'm sorry, too soon?
Okay, is there any further on this?
I, I do.
Yes, go ahead, Commissioner.
Really listening and taking in everything that's been said. But is this, I'm trying to get the, the complete fairness across the city. Because I understand we're saying that the funds come from the impact from what's being built and generated in the district. But you have opportunities where some district has more...
Construction.
Construction that's going on. And understanding that it's there, but also where, when we're looking at, not saying that District Four doesn't need $4 million, whatever, I'm sorry what that number is, I'm trying to get back to it, when you, when it goes and it gives us impact fees collected by the commission district. And then you have, when we look at District One, that's only gotten $62,000. Is that right? That's what I'm reading?
Well, I think that was the whole point of the Parks Bond. Originally, when we, when we came up with the idea of the Parks Bond, we knew that certain areas were not generating the same amount of park impact fee, which were denying District One and even District Three...
Yes.
At the time, with enough money to really be able to spend on new or refurbishing older parks. So, that was the whole idea of the $200 million parks, one of the reasons for that.
Okay. All right. So, part two or the continuation of my question and the statement I'm trying to make is, is this still a balance when you're saying 50%? Where 50% of what? If my, I don't have this type of impact in my community.
Right. Well, I mean...
Well, I think another way of looking at it is for the last, well, I guess it started in 2006, the park impact. So, for 18 years, I think we have been very generous throughout the whole city, actually, because those park impact fees for the last 18 years have really gone everywhere where we've needed them, haven't they?
Well, again, they don't know.
And also, what you basically asked me for with that, that breakdown, I'm, I'm hearing.
No, but they really have. And I, I would probably say that there have been, without a doubt, and I know there's probably some districts that have really funded projects all around the city to help all of those projects all around the city.
They have, like Rivlin Road.
Yes, exactly. But what I'm saying, but now, we're just sort of reining it in a little bit and saying, hey, maybe we just take half of that and give it all around the city, but keep half in the district in which it was...
Generated.
Exactly, that's all right. But I think we've been very good.
You all, you, you've heard me and, you know, I always, I come the same way. I, I feel that we are a city.
Right.
We are unified as one. So, if District Four has a fridge, a refrigerator overflowing with food, this is the way I'm going to put it, it's simple for me. And then, we have District One that doesn't have anything to eat. And we're going to say, oh, I'm going to just give you this portion where you can give more to benefit the whole city.
The flip side is, the people that have experienced a lot of construction in their neighborhoods or development that maybe have been not thrilled about it or have definitely had to live through a lot and then also deal with more density and traffic, et cetera, et cetera, say, why aren't these impact fees in my district or my neighborhood so that I can have more open space? So, there's always, look, I always think there's always more than one way of looking at it.
So, that's why maybe the 50-50 approach makes sense.
Exactly. You're slicing it right down the middle.
All right. So, why don't we just defer this to the, the Parks Board and let them come back to us with the recommendation?
And Mayor, before we close on this, just a couple of last thoughts. So, you, you brought up, I think, what's an interesting point. There are certain additions to what may not be considered a regional park, like the pickleball down at Snyder Park, which then have the ability to turn that into a regional park. So, I think as you're looking at this and we're making a determination of what's a regional park, we also need to be mindful of what, whatever these new additions are may have the effect of turning it into a regional park. So, even if it's not considered one now, it might become one as, as a result of the contemplated spending. So, just one thought, and I thought that was a, a good point, Mayor. The other thing I'll bring up too, again, having, having been here since, I think, the beginning of time, there were periods of time where the park impact fee fund was essentially depleted. Not that long ago, we were under $100,000 in the park impact fee fund. A lot of the money that's in there that's been generated has really been within the last 10 years. As we've seen this boom in the, again, you know, I credit a lot of it to the boom in the downtown area. I think we've built, what, 15,000 new units in the last 10 years roughly? So, a lot of that has really contributed substantially to the funds that you're seeing in there. But we also did have a couple of large expenditures. So, for example, when we did Hort Park, right, we acquired that nursery. I believe we used park impact fees, at least to some extent, to do that. And your point, Mayor, Rivlin Road, when we acquired that, I think part of that was stormwater funds, but I think there was also some park impact fee funds that may have gone into that. So, we had a couple of large projects, I think, that consumed a lot of that. And yes, District Four got, got the benefit of some of that, so...
It's time to pay back.
District Four generated it. We didn't, it doesn't necessarily get, we didn't get back what we generated, but, you know, like, you know, one of the things, okay, well, maybe, no, there is a formula we have to use because Pam does have a very good point there, but the same token, Steve has a good point, everybody has a good point. But, you know, it's, the people who are impacted the most, you know, you're going to impact and I'm going to be squeezed in here and now there's nothing but concrete and all of a sudden my impact fee dollars is going to go to an area that doesn't benefit me. It says there, you know, it has to have benefit to people that are going to be impacted the most. Question, I have a question. I see how the dollar amount, how the impact fees, how would they, how do they calculate that? I mean, just, I mean, it doesn't, not in the detail, but how do they figure those impact fees? If you could...
I can give you a very high level calculation.
And it says commercial and residential, but what type of residential is it? And is it just condos? Is it family home? Who's, who puts into that?
I'm sorry, is your question about how the fee is calculated?
It says commercial, residential, is there single-family homes, townhomes?
Oh, yes. So, in your backup, you'll have the full listing for the last year of who contributed. But really, the residential is primarily single-family homes, those type of locations. Commercial, it's also charged to places like hotels that have rooms. So, some of those commercial elements are in there as well.
It's a simple percentage of sale price or how, how do they...
No, it's based on square footage. For single-family homes, it's based on the square footage. For hotels, it's based on the number of rooms.
And it's all new construction? In other words, it's just new, a newly constructed hotel, a newly constructed apartment?
I believe so.
And I think it would include some redevelopment as well.
And renovations are, are nile?
No.
It's new units, new units.
Just if you're adding, if you're adding units is how it's, right.
Chris, do you want to comment on this?
As Chris is coming, I'm thinking also, we're talking about the impact. If you're not having those, in District Three, if you're not having those type of structures and construction going on, you're still having an impact. You're giving a, a negative impact where you're not receiving that opportunity for the funding. So, that's, it's part of my comment.
Well, actually, that's a good point, Pam. That actually is very good.
So, Chris, what generates an impact fee?
So, it's, it's on new construction, so, so redevelopment, well, redevelopment does, but if it's like a remodel or something like that, it doesn't. So, it's new construction and it's collected at building permitting. So, when we issued the building permits, they paid those fees. So, it's not DRC, it's not till it's actually a real project.
So, is it any new construction, like an office tower?
It's residential construction.
It's just residential construction? Okay.
Last, last question.
It says commercial, commercial. You mean, when you say residential, but...
Housing.
Well, no, no, wait, wait. There's a, it says 17% residential and 83% commercial. And you said residential. What does that commercial mean then?
That question's to you.
Repeat that.
Okay, you said it's res, it's all residential, but this pie chart says 17% residential, 83% commercial. What does that commercial mean?
I'll have to look. I think that may be the hotel, but I'll double check.
83%?
Probably not all that. Let me check.
And, and Chris, one last question from my side. So, I was just wondering, are projects that are doing affordable housing exempted from any of these impact fees? I, I know that question has come up in the past and I don't remember the answer.
I think it is.
Yeah, I think, I think it is, but...
I'm not sure. I don't think it is. I know the state allows us to exempt affordable projects. I just don't know if we've adopted that policy.
And the difference, obviously, between affordable and workforce, because workforce is at a, at a substantially higher value. But I know that there are certain exemptions that are available to affordable housing. Basically, the low-income housing tax credit projects, anything, you know, anything of that nature typically has, has some waivers on some of these things. And I didn't know if that applied to the park impact fee. I know it does to other things.
Yeah, I'll double check on that.
Thank you.
This is, this may be completely out of the scope, but I'm sitting here just wondering, recommendation, why can't we just do an annual rotation for who gets the funds?
So, I'll speak to the question of the nexus again. So, what the law requires is that the impact fees be expended to benefit the payers of the fee, the new users of the fee. So, if the funds, if we don't develop a methodology that ensures that, say, developer A is developing, he has 100 new dwelling units, he's paying fees for those new residents for that 100 dwelling units. And it's the city's responsibility to ensure that wherever we spend those funds, based on the law, benefits those individuals. So, the, the task really is for us to determine what, how, how, well, how we determine benefit based on the new park facilities that we fund with these funds. So, if it's, whether it's a distance away from that property, whether, you know, whatever the factor is, we have to have some kind of justification that says, we're spending these dollars to benefit these new users in accordance with the state statute.
Okay. You said before 15-mile radius?
So, that was based on that Broward County case law, which Broward County had in their code, 15 miles is the benefit radius for a regional park. And the court said, yes, we agree with you, Broward County. It is reasonable that individuals 15 miles away from a park would attend and receive benefit from that regional park.
Okay. So, is there anything preventing us as a city to put our radius, mile radius to benefit from a specific park?
If we have the data to support the fact that individuals are benefiting and do travel from one end of the city to the other to, to enjoy the amenities of those parks, then yes, it's justified. As I, I think Commissioner Herbst mentioned earlier, the adding of certain amenities may draw individuals from other ends of the city. And if we can document and prove that to be the case, then it's justifiable using those park impact fees for those sites.
Okay. All right. I want to see how we can do that because I'm thinking in, in my thought pattern here, if it's aligning with identifying who these new users are.
So, that's sort of what's in line with what staff is recommending with the 50-50 split. That first 50, the signature of regional parks, is based on the assumption that all of the city is benefiting from these particular parks that are going to be funded by those. And the second 50 is based on the population within the commission district and saying, well, the comprehensive plan requires three parks for every thousand people and we want to make sure that you're equally distributing parks within districts. So, whatever that district generates in terms of impact fees will be paid for parks within that district.
Chris, do you have a verdict? Wrap it up, boy. This is it. This is the final comment.
Not much different than what I, yeah, not much different than what I said. So, residential and, and hotel, new construction are what we base the park impact fees on. And those are based on the square footage. There's a chart that says, you know, from this many square feet to this, you pay this much of a park impact fee. And then for affordable housing, what our code currently states is that if somebody who is doing an affordable project asks to have the park impact fees waived and the commission can identify a source of funding to pay those fees, we can offset that, that way. However, I think that may have been before the law changed a couple of years ago that just said that the city could allow for affordable housing projects to not pay the fees. So, we may revisit that as a potential incentive. We have not updated our policy since then. Something we should think about.
Okay, but it, the number of bedrooms is not a factor at all? Just square footage?
Only for hotels.
What?
For hotels, the number of rooms, but aside from that, it's the square footage of the residential construction.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, let's move on. Thank you so much, everybody. I appreciate it. CF1 Audit of the IPS Group Contract, this is the parking meter contract. Who's going to be speaking to that?
Patrick Riley. Would you like me to come down there or...
If you, if, can you?
Well, it'd take a minute or two.
Okay, that's fine. It's okay. It's okay. I asked him if he can. He said he... What do you got for us?
Good afternoon, Honorable Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Commissioners. The City Auditor's Office performed an audit of the IPS Inc. contract. It's a parking meter contract where equipment is purchased for the parking meters. It includes a single parking meters and a multi-pay, multi-space pay stations along with maintenance and service support. At the time of the audit, approximately 120 new single-space meters and 160 multi-space meters were operating across the city. And, and it was an investment of about approximately 100, 1.5 million dollars during the audit period that we looked at.
1.5? 100 million or 1.5?
1.5 million.
1.5, okay.
Yeah. The Transportation and Mobility Department, specifically Parking Service Division, operates and maintains approximately 11,000 parking meters, spaces. And the city annual revenue for each of those parking spaces is approximately $1,800. And on a total annual revenue for parking is approximately 19.8 million dollars. This audit was part of our annual audit plan.
11,000 spikes total.
Well, 11,000 per, per parking space.
But, no, 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 11,000 spaces.
No, I'm sorry, 11,000 spaces and the...
And 1,800 per space.
And total aggregate, 19 million. 19.8 million dollars.
For the, for the city per year. Okay, thanks.
Yes.
That's a lot of nickels. Nichols, I remember those days up there.
Okay. The audit objective was to determine if the vendor complied with the, the terms and conditions of the contract and also to determine if the internal controls were being effective, specifically when purchasing meters, maintenance and support services, accepting, validating services received in accordance with the payment terms and the conditions of the contract. Our scope and methodology of the fall, of, is made up of the following. The audit covered the current IPS contract that was approved by the commission in January of 2021. It's a four-year contract with two-year, two-year additional options to extend. The audit included an examination of 100% of all invoices and any associated documents during the audit period, which was January 2021 through August 2023, and a review of related internal controls. On page 29 and 30 of the report is a description and, and a picture of what, what the different types of parking meters look like. The audit program focused on the execution of the contract and broke it down into three main areas. One, performing detailed testing of transactions and records, specifically purchase orders, invoices, and receipt of goods documents. Second, funding source, payment processes, insurance, and IT requirements. This audit was performed in accordance with generally accepted governmental auditing standards. To summarize our audit conclusions, we found that internal controls related to the administration and oversight of the IPS contract needed to be enhanced and monitored more closely. Overall, we found that the vendor complied with the price per contract terms. During the audit, we identified opportunities for enhancement in the areas of compliance with insurance coverage requirements, cyber compliance with the SOC 2 reports, which are, are reports that an independent auditor would do and take a look at the organization's ability to safeguard the data and accessibility and availability of data. So, that's, that's very common now for any companies that are managing or handling data of, of another company. The internal controls also, internal controls over purchasing and delivery were, was another opportunity that we thought we could make some suggestions and, and procedures to coordinate a payment to vendors. We had five audit findings. The key one I wanted to talk to a little bit about was finding number four. Inconsistent application of internal controls over purchasing, delivery, and payment. We noted Transportation, Mobility, and Finance utilized inverted purchase method for, for the commodity by entering a single line item with a lump sum total cost rather than a line item breakdown, including the quantities purchased and the unit cost. When purchasing equipment, inventory, or supplies, those type of things, the three-way match is a crucial process for accounting and controlling purchases and ensuring their accuracy. It involves verifying an invoice by cross-referencing it with two other documents. The purchase order, known as the PO, specifies the quantity and items that are being purchased. And the receiving document is the key item that documents and confirms the quantity of purchased goods that were received. The goal, to ensure that all relevant detail, details across these three documents match. Creating requisitions, POs, receipt documents that match the invoice with correct quantities and unit prices is a first step to ensuring the accuracy and inventory and financial records, identifying and resolving discrepancies, preventing... records, identifying and resolving discrepancies, preventing theft and loss. We provided our recommendations for each of the findings, which I just discussed, and management concurred with our findings and is implementing action plans to address them. Several of the findings have already been taken care of by management. This completes my presentation. I would like to thank Transportation and Mobility and the Finance Department for assisting us with our audit. I also like to thank our audit staff, my audit staff, who worked on the audit. At this time, I would accept any questions or address anything that you'd like to discuss at this time.
Okay, does anyone have any questions?
I do have a question, if I can.
Go ahead.
And you're going to shoot me. I know you want to get them. Okay, I think this might be more for Ben or Milos, one of them. Do you have a map or a list of where the meters are, I mean, geographically within our city? Is that something that we have?
Yeah, there's actually a GIS map that's available to the public that has every single meter across the city. If it's a single space, if it's multi-space, it talks about the meter number, talks the rate of charge, and how many parking spaces are available in that area.
Okay, great. My staff will get that for me. Thank you so much, Ben.
Anyone else have any questions?
Just a comment. So Pat, I just want to say thank you. It was very thorough, and there weren't a tremendous amount of positive findings, so I'm happy to see the management's response. And you feel confident that we'll be able to address everything that you've found in each of these findings?
Yes, and I think most of them are, you know, very easily corrected. And like I had mentioned, most of them have been corrected at this point.
Okay, thank you very much again. Thank you for your work and for your whole team. Thank you.
I would just echo that again. Thanks, Pat, and glad to see that staff is implementing recommendations. So I always appreciate that when staff agrees with the auditor's office. Linda shaking her head, no, I don't agree. But she's going to do it anyway.
Okay. That's it? All right, very good. Thank you, Pat. Thank you so much. CF2 Quarterly Investment Report for Period Ending March 31, 2024. Linda? How much money have you made for us?
Okay, good. You know what? That is a question that comes up all the time. And the report doesn't really show it in good fashion, but I have it written down here, and it's going to be an enhancement going forward. Of course, I have Richard Pangeli with me with PFM Asset Management, as well as Scott Sweden? Sweden from PFM Asset Management. But overall, this fiscal year, our long-term fixed investment portfolio earned about $4.3 million this fiscal year alone. Our overall investments citywide, we earned about 2.54% is what our fiscal year-to-date that we've earned in interest as a percentage. And I will turn it over to Richard to give you some market updates to see whether or not this positive trend will continue for the rest of the year.
Mayor, Commissioners, thank you. Richard Pangeli, PFM Asset Management. Yeah, the outlook continues to be good for the cash and cash reserve portfolio for the city. The Fed at its most recent meeting mid-June basically kept rates at these current levels and forecast that they would continue to keep rates at the current level and decline them, potentially lower them at a lower pace than they had projected earlier. However, they did sort of push the rate cuts into next year. So things look good now, but the forecast is that as we go into the next calendar year that we will see potentially lower interest rates, which would mean lower earnings on the city's portfolios. As you know, every year, we go through an exercise of allocating some funds between the shorter-term investments and the longer investments, longer being, you know, one- to five-year-type investments, which is something that we did earlier this year in anticipation of lower rates. Towards the end of this year and going into next year, we'll look to do the same exercise of figuring out what we can allocate into these longer investments to really hold on to these higher interest rate levels on cash. So looks good for this year, and we're planning for potentially lower interest rates next year.
So it was just under 3% is the earning, right? So, to something, right? So Dean Trentalis can go out tomorrow. I know this question's been asked before, so if you can answer it again. I can go out tomorrow to a local bank and get 5.5% on a one-year CD. So tell me why we're doing, why we aren't doing that?
Yeah, so there's a combination of factors, right? So, you know, the numbers, the aggregate numbers includes some of your bank accounts and some accounts that may not be, have a higher yield on them because they're cash account, checking-type accounts. On the shorter end, in the longer part of the portfolio, your portfolio reflects investments that have been made going back five years, right? So some of those investments were made three years ago when, yeah, so it made, you know, three years ago when interest rate levels were closer to zero, and you were investing out in longer-term rates picking up, you know, 1%, 1% and 1/2, 2%. So some of those are still in the portfolio. The return on the longer part portfolio is really measured over interest rate cycles. When you look at new rates that are going in or new investments that are going in, they are going in at those 5% type interest rate levels that you are seeing in the portfolio. So over time, the longer-term portfolio moves up, and we've seen that happen since 2021. And then when interest rates start going down, it'll move in a slower pace and really hold on to rates as interest rates go down.
Yeah, I understand that. So, but why aren't, do we have any ready cash now that we can convert to CDs?
Well, you have a significant amount of your portfolio in liquid investments that are earning 5.3%, 5.4%.
Oh, we do?
Yes, oh, absolutely, yes. You have local government investment pools.
But you're saying the blended rate over previous investments, which brought it down, is at that rate?
Yes.
Okay, all right. Anyone else have any questions?
So, yeah, just to tie in, so as I'm looking at the, at your index, at your, you know, your 30-day gross yield index, you're definitely under that. So it sounds to me like you're saying it's a duration issue. So you were longer as, on lower-rate instruments as the market started to increase, and that, and you basically took a capital loss on that, even though interest rates were going up. Is that kind of where we are?
On the longer part of the portfolio.
The longer part of the portfolio?
Yes. However, the longer part of the portfolio has been outperforming its benchmark. So, you know, you have both a long-term and a short-term benchmark.
Right.
So the longer part, which is indexed to the longer part, has been outperforming that benchmark. The shorter part of the portfolio contains a mix of local government pools, bank accounts, other things that have some yields that might be lower than that LGIP index.
So the underperformance relative to the 30A index is because this is an aggregate of your short-term portion and your long-term portion. Okay. But if you disaggregate that, you just look at your long-term versus your shorter-term, they're more in line with their respective indexes?
Yes, yes.
Okay. And then just in terms of your positioning now, what are you doing for duration? Are you staying short? Are you, when are you going to start going longer?
Long part of the portfolio?
Yeah.
We're neutral. You know, we, there's a question around, you know, when rate cuts will happen.
Not so much if anymore, I think, is kind of where we are, right?
Right. And how long? So, and we're actually talking about this this morning. Our consensus view, you know, the Fed projected one rate cut this year, but it was very close, just one different vote, and it would have been projecting two. The market thinks a cut in September, 7% chance, and then another cut in December. Our consensus view is for two cuts. And your actual portfolio manager, Meredith, is actually dissenting opinion within our strategy group. She thinks there'll be no cuts this year.
Okay.
So taking that all together, generally, not only your portfolio, we're generally neutral to duration, and then...
So you're not going to be migrating at any point during the year towards shifting some of the balance over more towards longer duration?
We possibly might go longer, the benchmark, towards the end of the year, but right now we're not, we don't have as much conviction that we're ready to do that now.
What's your weighting between short-term and long-term right now?
I don't recall what the, let me look what the overall balance is. And that's driven by the city.
We can follow up with that later. We don't need to have that right now. I just, all right. No, okay, thank you very much. I appreciate it. Actually, Linda has it. There she goes. I knew she would. And I apologize for boring the audience with finance stuff.
Yeah, we'll follow up with that one.
Why don't you follow up with her afterwards?
Okay, thank you.
All right, let us move on. Right after City Commission reports, we're going to have the CRA meeting, so let's start with Commissioner Herbst.
Thank you, Mayor. So kind of a question towards the city manager. I understand there's a new report out from the County Commission relative to the bridge tunnel conversation. Have you had an opportunity to review that yet? And what does it mean for us?
I've received it today, this morning. So we have staff that are involved in the project reviewing, and we'll be able to probably provide a commission member with some impact or just thoughts once we have a chance to review it.
Is anybody prepared to talk about anything today related to it?
Well, they just got the report.
Has anybody read through it yet? No?
We just got the report, yeah.
Oh, I know, Mayor. I got it, and I read through it, so I was just wondering if anybody else did.
I have my thoughts, but I don't think you want to hear them.
Well, Susan has her copy in her hand, but not ready to discuss. Okay, then, yeah, I look forward to a memo on this. I would have liked to have had a discussion about this, but I understand we just got it. I believe the County Commission is going to be talking about this in August. Is that your understanding as well?
Yes.
Okay. So we may have something definitive out of the county by the time we come back for our August meeting?
Yes.
Or if not, certainly by September. All right. I'd like that to be an agenda item for us on conference for discussion.
We can do that for August 20th. It looks like Ben has some thoughts.
Yeah, Commissioner, we've already reached out to BDO since they were the ones referenced in the memo, so I have a meeting scheduled with them next week.
Great.
To get into kind of the details, and then we can send out a commission memo.
Yeah, I really would like to see some coordination. If we're going to take some time to analyze this and bring back, you know, some follow-up, yeah, let's have BDO look at this, weigh in, and potentially have some discussions with the county. Because I think the numbers vary. I'll leave that politely, substantially. So we need to get on the same page here. This is, obviously, I'm not saying anything we all don't know. It's a critical decision, and we need to, you know, we need to achieve some finality with our direction. And it's important that we get aligned with the county on this, and that, you know, our engineers who have wildly disparate views of where things are going need to bring this somewhat closer together.
Yep, so we're already on the calendar to meet next week with BDO, and then we can send out a commission memo with an update. The other update on that project is that we have been working with the Rio Grande Tour to come down to South Florida and do some workshops and some training seminars that would talk about what does, you know, long-term financing look like? How do we get on the same page? And how can we get this project moving forward? So I actually spoke with them earlier today about that, and so we're looking at some dates and times. It would probably be late August, early September, depending on their availability.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate that. And just one other thing, just to update, no, I'm sorry, you can have a seat. Just to update the commission. So it's my understanding, although I have not yet had a conversation with Jack Seiler, but I understand that he has had a discussion with the Moss Brothers related to the mediation that we have ongoing with Inter Miami. So hopefully, we'll have a little more information from him by the time we come back from our recess, and we can discuss that.
Will you be having any more sessions, mediation sessions between now?
There's nothing scheduled. As you recall, we were all pretty, you know, vocal in asking Stephanie to get her client to submit a revised number to us. We don't have one yet, still waiting on it. I actually met with Stephanie last night and reiterated, you know, that we're really looking for an offer on the table. We haven't gotten that yet, but again, like I said, I understand that they did have a meeting with Mr. Seiler, and hopefully, there'll be something forthcoming, and we can get a meeting scheduled.
Okay.
And then last thing, I want to talk a little bit about the homeless issue. So we all know that Supreme Court has rendered its decision relative to Grants Pass, which would seem to provide a foundational underpinning for the state's new statute. And so I'd like to talk about how we're going to move forward, what we're going to do with the county, where these conversations stand. I know our attorney's office has been meeting with the county attorney and perhaps some other city attorneys. I know there's been discussion about pallet homes from Nan Rich. I know there are some potential sites that have been discussed. We all saw that the county has rejected the use of the stockade, which, you know, if I'm going to be strictly parochial, I'm happy about, but in the larger sense, is probably not the best move. So I want to understand where we are, and let's talk about what we're doing as a city, just so I can understand that.
Well, I will start. You know, we've been waiting for the county to put that meeting together, and they have next Monday on July 8th. They're having a meeting for city managers. So we're planning on attending Anthony and myself, and we will get all the information that they have there. And then over the break, come up with a staff recommendation as far as what we should be doing going forward, and then I'm going to pass that over to Tom to see what the city attorney group is doing.
When the ruling was issued by the U.S. Supreme Court, the county attorney contacted me right away, as well as the other 30 attorneys for the different cities. And another meeting is being scheduled for all of us to discuss the impact of the ruling.
Okay. I'm going to suggest that we should probably designate one of the commissioners to sort of participate in this, and by the way, not me. But although I've got Amanda down here from my office, and she's deeply involved in dealing with our homeless population. She works with Roost Ministries and Christ Church and is very involved with it. I know she's interested in participating, but I do think we ought to, you know, designate somebody from the commission. I don't know who might have an interest, but I think, you know, some level, some high-level engagement as we move forward on this is very, very important. So I'll just leave it at that, and...
I think it's a good idea. I know Commissioner Sturman has been out to San Diego and has started some initiatives on his own part. I know Commissioner Beasley Pittman is part of, she's on the COC, so as between the two of you, if you want...
Okay, here's my suggestion, and I was going to do it at my, when I have my turn at the, I'm always at the end, but that's the...
Well, what do you want to respond?
Okay, I've met with Lamar now three times. We're meeting with Broward Health again. I mean, we could chop this up. Pam is dealing with a lot of the affordable housing at risk and whatnot. Low-barrier shelters is something that we've sort of taken over, and I would like to continue. I'm going to be meeting with, I mean, United Way and I have met a few times. Lamar and I have gone to the point where we're looking at budgets, designating spots, trying to get not in my backyard, you know, not everything in Fort Lauderdale. I will give you more details when I'm up there, but I think I would love to be the point person, if that's okay.
It's between you and Commissioner Beasley Pittman, whoever wants to take the lead on that.
Well, with Sunshine, are we able to work together? How does that, so?
Not at all.
Not at all.
Yeah, but they're not going to have...
But it does make it...
It's too complicated.
Right. Okay. Because with the meetings that I am attending with the COC, we're talking about many of the things that you were discussing.
Right.
But also, you are making opportunity with Lamar to make sure that these things are moving in a certain direction.
Right.
So if there is a way that we could work together without violating the Sunshine Law, I think that we could be powerful for the city to make it happen.
Okay.
So however, we can make that happen through our attorneys, whoever can give us that definition. I think we could work together to make it happen.
So what does that mean?
He's going to give me a definition of how we can do this.
Yeah, I don't know the answer to that. I mean, first of all, Warren, you can continue to do what you've been doing regardless, okay? So, and to your point, John, just the cursory reading of that Supreme Court decision, it seemed to me, based on my conversations with other attorneys, that all it did was reaffirm the state's right to enact the statute that it did enact. In other words, we can arrest people who encamp in public spaces. The big question we have here is not so much that as it is the enforcement mechanism by a private person. That's the big, that's the challenge we have. That was not taken up in Grants Pass because it wasn't an issue in Grants Pass.
Right.
So it's really becoming a legal issue as far as enforceability, and that's the most troubling part. Grants Pass just, again, reaffirmed the state's authority to do what it did. Now the question is, where do we take it from there? And I see on tonight's agenda, we're funding 20 shelter spaces, which, thank you for being able to find those 20 shelter spaces. 20 shelter spaces, but that's just a, you know, a small dent in the demand that we have.
I would like to do the niche of low-barrier shelters.
Well, I'm just saying—
Not to step on Pam's steps.
Those are conversations we could all have, but the question is, you know, we need a point person to work with staff to try to come back to the commission with recommendations on steps forward. So, if you want to do it, or Pam wants to do it, why don't you just figure it out between yourselves, and we'll go from there, all right?
Okay.
And a final thought on that, Mayor. You know, I think you're right. I think we probably will see some more litigation related to the ability of residents to sue, to enforce the requirement that the cities deal with the individuals that are out there camping on public spaces. I think the best part of this thing is that we'll see some—more of a sense of urgency, I think, with our partners at the county now to move this issue forward, because I don't think in our earlier conversations, we weren't seeing, you know, a lot of forward movement on this. There was a lot of hesitancy, I think, in trying to address the issue in a very comprehensive way. And I think that this case law now establishes, you know, more of an urgency, and that's what I'm, you know, I'm happy to see that, because I think we really need to address this issue in a more comprehensive way than we have been able to do traditionally, and it really requires that partnership between us and the county, as well as us and other cities, because as you—
Well—
we all talk about the fact that we're the dumping ground for the county, because people get arrested, and they get let go downtown, and then it becomes Fort Lauderdale's problem. So, now, it's really not a Fort Lauderdale problem by itself. We need a regional solution, and hopefully, this is the impetus for really creating that regional solution.
Okay, so—to—
How do I point—
How do I—
Hold on. To that point, it's a very good question, but it's been asked, and we've tried to find the answers to it. So, through the Sheriff's Department, we're starting initiatives, working with them on the discharge protocols with the Sheriff's Department. I know our chief of police, Bill Schultz, has been coming up with possible solutions on how we can work with individuals who are brought to the central facility here and are ultimately discharged onto our streets. I know they're trying to fix that. Same with the discharge proceedings with the hospital district. That, too, are—there are initiatives undertaken, and we're gonna try to come up with protocols to change that as well. But I have to tell you that I sent a letter out a number of weeks ago to the coastal mayors saying, hey, let's get together. We have the greatest impact of homeless people. Let's see if we can come up with a solution, because I'm not sure the county is going to be part of this, and I got almost no interest whatsoever. It was very, very disappointing. In fact, one of the cities, larger cities, says, oh, we don't really have that much of a problem. We don't need to do this. And I'm thinking, boy, your head's in the sand. So, I won't name names, but all I'm saying is that whatever we can do on our own, let's try to work with the county. I trust—I agree with you. They're the partners that we need to work with to make this happen, so. How do I do that within Sunshine, working with Pam, Tom? I mean, Dean says I should get together with Pam, and we should talk about how to divvy up the workload for this.
Well, my suggestion is, think it through, and then, at some point in tonight's meeting, you can tell us what you've thought through.
Okay, because, I mean, we have—we're going on break, and we're running out of time, so how do—I don't know how to communicate with her without—I mean, I try to, I mean, loop in Pam with whatever we do, but—
I think you're better off selecting one of you. You have two of you, as John points out. Every time you do that, you're gonna have to do a notice.
Okay.
We have to take minutes.
Okay, okay.
Very hard to keep up with that. One of the two of you—
I will digress and allow Warren to go ahead, because you've already built the relationship.
Okay.
You're in contact.
Oh, thank you.
You've been traveling. Your hands are on that particular
Right.
part of it, so continue to do that, and then I will continue to go to the COC meetings, and I'll work from that end.
Okay.
That's—okay?
Okay, great. And just so we—so I'm not stepping—I mean, I'm just doing that one niche. Everything else, the other stuff, I'm not—
Well, that's a big niche.
Exactly.
Well, the low barrier, but you know, there's a lot—look, at-risk, affordable housing. There's a lot of other things that play into this, too, that I'm not gonna be touching upon, and I will be giving the report at the end about what I've done so far, and I will continue to report on a regular basis, how we're doing. Okay, thanks.
Great. Commissioner Beasley Pittman.
Thank you, thank you. I'm not gonna try to take up too much of time, but I do want to share some of the activities that I was privileged to be a part of over the last couple of weeks. Unfortunately, on June 19th, the weather had prohibited us from having a Juneteenth celebration that was scheduled at Carter Park. That day, it didn't actually rain, but the days leading up to the event, there was a—you know, we experienced that large downpour of rain, and the grounds were saturated, but we look forward to planning and preparing an event again for the year of 2025. Also, on—let's see what date that was—that would be Thursday, the 20th. I was able to meet with the Broward League of Cities membership. We met, and we discussed—we actually met with the superintendent of the school board, and he gave us a nice introduction, and—yeah, the new one, Hefern. We were able to meet with him, and he gave us a beautiful conversation explaining his direction and what his initiative is for the district. Also, on June 24th, I was able to meet with our educational director, Susan Leon. We had a great conversation, touching on some of the ideas that she's hoping to implement here in the city, and then some of the things that I'm concerned about within our district as well. I had a great conversation on Tuesday, June 25th. It was actually Vice Mayor and I, we attended groundbreaking for the Six Trunk Distillate—
Distillery.
Thank you, sir. There we go. It is the Victory. It's called the Victory Building, and it's right on Six Trunk, and we are looking forward to that complex coming up and bringing great opportunities to the Six Trunk Quarter. Also, let's see here. I was busy on the 25th. I also met with some of the Six Trunk business owners, along with the police, voicing some of their concerns, and Susan—Susan Grant was there, our police was there, fire was there, and addressing some of the concerns on the quarter. Great turnout, great, I believe, great results, and looking forward to moving forward in a positive manner. On Wednesday, the 26th, I did attend the Contemplative Care Board with Broward County. Great opportunity, great conversation as well. On Friday, June 28th, I would like to say congratulations to the fire rescue candidates that graduated. I wasn't able to attend, but congratulation on those new cadets that are now be working for the city of Fort Lauderdale from fire rescue. Also, on Sunday, June 30th, we all know that it was the great celebration. Congratulations to the Florida Panthers in winning the Stanley Cup. I was—I did not attend. I was actually at the memorial service for Ernestine Ray, where I presented a expression of sympathy on behalf of the commission. Also, upcoming events—
At least it didn't rain on your event.
Let me hold your hand. Okay, upcoming events. This is an invitation. I'm hoping that everyone receives this invitation from the dais. On Wednesday, July 3rd, we are celebrating veteran, WWII veteran, Mr. Thomas Doughty. He's turning 100 years old, okay? The parade is in District 3. If you haven't received it, we'll make sure that everyone has it, but this is a great opportunity to celebrate a birthday and acknowledge our WWII veteran from District 3. Also, on July 13th, 4:00 PM, the Sprout Bus, the Mobile Food Bus is scheduled to be in the district. Right now, we are still at Lincoln Park 54—I'm sorry, 544 Northwest 19th Avenue, there in the parking lot. Also, on July 20th, from 9:00 to 12:00, at Dillard High School, there will be a back-to-school escravaganza. This will have back-to-school supplies, resources for really everyone in the city. It's not only a District 3, it's just hosting District 3. On Saturday, August 3rd, is a community support unit back-to-school cookout. This is provided and hosted by Fort Lauderdale PD, District 3. This is at—on August 3rd at 12:00 PM, and that address is 3601 West Davie Boulevard. Also, on August 3rd, at the YMCA, we will have a back-to-school event, and that will be at the YMCA from 12:00 to 3:00. Summer Jams is Friday, August 16th, from 7:00 to 10:00 at Mills Pond. Again, everyone is invited. This is—I love to say, this is a citywide event that's being hosted.
Is it original event?
Signature, original. All these beautiful terms, but this is open to everyone in the city. I'm hoping to see everyone on the dais, that you come out and let's have a good time. Again, that's August 16th, 7:00 PM, Mills Pond. Very excited to share that we are hosting a senior symposium Friday, April 20—August 23rd—I'm trying to go back in the year.
Right.
Friday, August 23rd, 10:00 AM to 2:00 PM. This is at the YMCA. This is an opportunity for our seniors to get resources regarding generational wealth, being able to secure property, making sure, as Mahdi was sharing with us before, that everyone is connected with the link for alert, also being able to align trusts and wills and things of that matter, so they can protect their properties. So, that is all for me this time.
Okay.
Thank you for the space.
You're very welcome. Vice Mayor.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Wednesday, June 19th, I wanted to thank Parks and Rec for the public participation meeting for the Channel Square and Promenade Park discussion. As you know, the commission for the last couple of years has been rezoning spaces that have been used as parks. These are very important spots on the Barrier Island, especially Promenade Park. They're huge parcels right on the intercoastal, and very valuable. So, to be able to actually designate them parks is very important, and very much appreciated by the neighboring residents. So, thank you for that. That'll make its way to planning and zoning, and then it will make its way to us. Thursday, June 20th, I had the pleasure of speaking at the Central Beach Alliance. That is the last meeting. They take off July and August. That was at the beautiful Conrad Hotel on A1A. Tuesday, June 25th, as Commissioner Beasley Pittman mentioned, it was a pleasure to be at the groundbreaking for the Victory Building, paying homage to the Victory Theater, which was quite a cultural institution back around 1940 on Sistrunk. So, we're looking forward to seeing that project move forward. That evening, I attended the Flagler Village Civic Association's social at Livia, a restaurant that's been voted new restaurant—best new restaurant, right on Andrews, really a lovely spot. The following night, I went back to Flagler Village and attended their civic association meeting to see the latest and greatest iterations on the One Stop Shop Arts Park, which we'll be heading to DRC on July 11th. Friday, June 28th, I had the pleasure of attending, at the Four Seasons Hotel, the Fire Rescue Cadet Graduation Class 2402. It was really—a really wonderful, wonderful afternoon. The cadets were all incredible. Getting to meet them all and spending time with them. This is a great new class, and we welcome them to service in our city, and thank them for their service, and pray for their safety. On Sunday, June 30th, that was just two days ago, I will tell you, that is a parade I will never, never forget. We had a fun time, Commissioner Sturman, the mayor and I. It was great, and I don't mean just all the margaritas. It was really a ball. We had a great time. The spirit was amazing. The people were amazing. We started a half an hour late because of lightning, and it was a light rain during the whole day, but you know what? I think, in a way, it's better, thinking back. It was only in the 70s, mid 70s, which was a lot easier to be outside all that time than a hot sunny day where you'd be really uncomfortable, and probably people would be having hydration problems. So, you know, it all worked out. A lot of fun, massive crowd down by the stage area. To me, it looked just like Tortuga. I'm really curious to see what those numbers are when we're able to figure out how many people participated. But I wanted to say thank you. I wanted to say thank you to Susan and Ben, who I know spent so much time all week in preparation for that, and all of their staffs. I want to thank the police for the incredible job on Sunday, and before preparing. I want to thank fire for all of that incredible work, and also helping both chiefs, all of our—all of our fire, all of our police. IT worked as well. And then, I will tell you, when I drove back at the end of the parade to head home, I said, oh, my God, look at—I mean, it looked like—it looked like Tortuga, New Year's Eve, Christmas, every festival combined. It looked like everything all combined, the mess that was left on A1A and on the beach. And I will tell you, kudos to Carl and his team and everyone that got that beach cleaned up. By the next morning, you couldn't even tell. In fact, most of that was done the night before, and that is an amazing, amazing job, when you think what happened. So, I want to say thank you so much to all of those people that put in that extra time. Last but not least, the team that was so deserving, and the fans. This was—a—an interesting point was brought up to me at my district agenda meeting last night. Someone said, you know, you see all of these celebrations in cities around the country when people win these championships, and you see destructive behavior. You see just out-of-control, out-of-control folks destroying property, really out of hand, and yet, look at the celebration that we hosted on our beach for the city. I saw national coverage. These people, although some of them had a few, I will tell you, the behavior was really good. No incidents, and just the spirit was great. It was really—it was really great to see. It was really great to be part of. We had a ball. What can I say? And I think it was a great day for the city and a great day for our community. So, again, I just wanted to say thank you to everyone who was so involved and spent so much time making sure that everything went off with a hitch.
I mean, without a hitch.
Without a hitch, exactly.
Not without a hitch.
Without a hitch. Thank you. I will be—just one thing coming up. Thursday, I'm looking forward—I'm gonna have on the 11th a walk-through, the Sun Tex Marina. As you know, we're getting that La Solis Marina ready for the boat show. If any of you have not been down there, the progress is incredible, and it's really exciting what's happening. That is a major project, creating those 84 super yacht slips, mega yacht slips, and I'm really looking forward to seeing that. I'll get a little peek of that, as I did a few weeks ago when I went through DC Alexander Park, but this is an exciting, exciting time for that area of the Barrier Island. I wanted to also congratulate—Mayor touched upon it—Miami New Times rating the NSU Art Museum, where we are, as the best museum in South Florida for 2024. Congratulations to Bonnie. Congratulations to this venue. Congratulations to our arts and cultural venues, many of which have taken a dramatic and significant hit in the last couple of weeks with the huge cuts to their funding, and it would be very difficult for many of them. Last but not least, happy 4th of July to everyone. Stay safe, have a great summer. I always feel like today's the last day of school, and summer vacation is getting ready to start, and I just wanted to say thank you and wish all of my colleagues a very safe and happy summer. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, thank you, Vice Mayor. Commissioner Sturman.
Sometimes it sucks to go last, you know. You know, it's like the TV show, Mark. It's a blessing and a curse. Today, it's a bit of a curse. You guys took—the thunder out of everything. I'm gonna talk about four things, Mr. Mayor.
Move to adjourn.
Four quick things. Number one, the quickie is, we're gonna be having our next town hall. It's gonna be on the budget. It was very effective last year. We've added several things into the budget based upon what District 4 wanted. Jerry and Renee—Renee, you could stand up and wave. Okay, there she is. So, we will contact everybody about when our District 4 budget town hall will be. Carl, you want to stand up for one second? Just come on down for—just to give a heads up. For the Independence Day, for the Independence Day celebration, Susan, what day is it gonna be this year? Oh, yeah, July 4th. That's bad humor. Very bad. Just want to mention two words about time and everything, just as an announcement for July 4th celebration.
Yeah, so, good afternoon.
Yeah, so, uh, good afternoon, Carl Williams, Parks and Recreation Director. Yes, so July 4th is the day. Uh, it will be all day, um, starting in the morning, um, all the way until, uh, about nine o'clock at night, uh, when the fireworks will go off, a quarter to nine. And so, um, at the loop, we'll have some family fun activities that'll take place there. And then when we get closer to nightfall, uh, we'll have In Vogue who will be performing.
Okay, I am looking forward to seeing you there. I'm looking forward to seeing my colleagues. Believe it or not, we do get along when, when, when we're out there at these events. We get along very well. You would not know that, because every one of you guys are fine individuals. We might seem differently, but we're all here for the city. So, I'm looking forward to joining every one of you there. Um, number three, um, Carl, stay there for one second. You're standing up anyway. Susan, Ben, Bill, Steve, stand up for one second. I know you said it already, you guys were awesome for that parade. A round of applause if we can. I mean, you don't have to come to, you just, you just, you took the impossible and, um, you, you, uh, came off without a hitch, without a hitch, right? Without a hitch, and a phenomenal job. So, thank you so much. Um, I'm looking forward to next year, not if, but when we win. I hope we don't have rain on our parade, so, uh, not if, but when we win next year. We hope it's, and I did bring my sun ten, my sunblock. I didn't use any, so I'm, I'm saving it for next year. Hopefully, I'll be able to use it next year for the parade. Okay, thank you, Ben, thank you, everybody. Um, last one, like I promised, Mr. Mayor, here's my little latest update on the homeless. I've met with, uh, Commissioner Lamar Fisher. I believe this is the fourth time that he and I have met. We discussed several things. I shared the presentation that I had shared with you. Um, certain things he was intrigued with, certain programs he's very, uh, um, looking forward to trying to implement within the county, um, some things such as the parking and, uh, some of the other aspects. We're looking at low-barrier shelters, like we've mentioned, uh, which will help us legally comply with the new law. Um, we're looping in several partners. I've already spoken to, uh, United Way, Broward Health. We have a, a, a follow-up, I think our third follow-up conversation with them, how they could play a part. And we're going to be meeting with Salvation Army to see, uh, inventory and how they've, uh, worked at it. Um, we are, uh, we've requested, Lamar requested a budget, so we've gotten the budget from San Diego, reviewing what they've done, um, how their, uh, costs are, card costs as well as ongoing, um, employ, like, like security and labor costs. And, um, we also, you'd like this also, John, we're talking about geography. And one of the things that we're stressing, and Lamar is on board, um, not in my backyard is, is not going to work for this problem. This is a county-wide problem. He's already thinking outside the box, thinking of different locations that he's trying to identify outside of the city of Fort Lauderdale. We're looking at some within the city of Fort Lauderdale. Um, we're planning on having a follow-up meeting within the week with Susan and Anthony, Susan B. Anthony, and, um, uh, I will keep you apprised as we go forward. Thank you very much, that's the end of my report.
Okay, very good, thank you. Um, just, actually, quite a few things happened in the last couple of weeks, uh, with me. On June 20th, um, I, uh, had the opportunity to be the, um, the speaker before the Chamber of Commerce, the Greater Fort Lauderdale Chamber of Commerce Board, and, uh, they wanted an update on things happening in the city. It was a really nice breakfast event and, uh, excuse me, luncheon event. Very happy to have, um, participated with them. The very next day, um, I flew to Kansas City, Missouri, and attended the, uh, three-day session of the U.S. Conference of Mayors. Learned a lot, spent a lot of time with some of our local mayors there. We seemed, uh, not to be able to connect while we're here, so we ended up going a thousand miles away to be able to meet with them. Uh, but, uh, brought back some, uh, good points, as we all do, like when we go to the National League of Cities and, uh, all these conferences. Um, and, uh, I spoke with the mayor of San Diego, by the way, on their pallet project, uh, for the homeless. Seems like it's getting mixed reviews in his hometown, so we can talk about that another time. Uh, so, on the 25th, I attended the Tri-County Mayor's Breakfast Panel and Big Ideas Event. Uh, my, my panel consisted of myself, Rex Harden from Pompano Beach, and the Vice Mayor of Miami Beach was up here. Good discussion, mostly in front of, uh, a realtor audience, and, uh, just had a lot of ideas that people tried to exchange. Anyway, it was a great, uh, opportunity for the city to, uh, represent itself on what's going on. Uh, let's see, I went on June 27th, I attended the breakfast for our lifeguards. We had a lifeguard appreciation breakfast. They brought themselves, their families, their kids. It was really a nice, uh, time at the new, at New Bay. I had not been to New Bay yet, so, uh, if you haven't been there, they converted the boiler room into a beautiful, uh, rooftop lounge and restaurant. So, uh, I invite everybody to go there. It's in the Hilton Hotel, uh, another great amenity at, on Fort Lauderdale Beach. On June 28th, I attended the Fire Cadet Graduation. Uh, I believe there were 17, um, I believe there were 17. Just wonderful opportunity to meet the new folks that are going to be part of our, our firefighter team. And, um, and to reiterate what you've, what has already been said, about what a, what a great, um, first responder group we have with our fire department. And now we have 17 more. And it was really a very touching moment to see the family, the, the dads, the moms, pinning their, their new badge on their uniforms. It was, uh, the daughter was another one? Yeah. So, it was very, very touching, and, uh, it was great to be part of that event. On June 29th, at the Museum of Discovery and Science, they had their annual, uh, pride celebration. And that was where, um, uh, parents and kids were invited to attend, um, a pride celebration at the Museum of Science. What was remarkable about it was that last year when I attended, most of the parents and kids were, uh, same-sex couples. Uh, this time, there were very few of them. And out of the 250 or so people that were there at the museum, most of them were straight parents bringing their kids, um, to a, a safe and friendly environment to learn about, uh, pride and, and the history of the LGBT community. Uh, that same night, I presented a proclamation to the New Mason's Lodge, uh, which is, which was in the Northwest, New Mason's Lodge, number 69, which they were celebrating St. John's Day. Wonderful opportunity to meet, uh, new folks that I've never met before, um, and, um, making everyone feel like they're all, we're all a part of the same community and appreciate, uh, being able to be asked to present that proclamation. And finally, I think I just have to echo everyone's sentiments regarding the pride parade. Excuse me, the Panthers Parade, sorry. The Panthers Parade, which we gave us, which gave us much pride. Uh, we've never seen anything like that before in Fort Lauderdale. And, uh, and, uh, and, and, and I, and my, you know, I applaud our firefighters, I applaud our, our, uh, our police department, Parks and Rec, and all the agencies and departments that made that a success. But I have to tell you, my hats off to the people that attended the event. I mean, the people that attended the event, well-behaved, fun-loving, just there to have a good time and to celebrate the success of that team. Uh, and, uh, and they came from all over. People flew in for this from other parts of the country. I met a number of people who were, who, uh, flew in for this event. I'm sorry, from, from the world? I don't know about the world. I didn't meet any world people, but I met, uh, people from other parts of the country.
Mayor, do we have any idea what the economic impact was for the city?
Millions, millions, millions.
Does anyone study that or put that together?
I'm sure the DVA or the Chamber, someone will come up with that. There's still, there's still counting receipts.
I'd love to know that, because all of the hotels were booked, the restaurants were jammed. I, I'd be interested to see if we had that kind of a number for the economic.
I think Visit Lauderdale is working on that.
Okay, good, thanks.
Uh, another great thing about Visit Lauderdale is that they co-sponsored the team for the next two years. And guess what's on their helmets? Visit Lauderdale. Our name is, is, is emblazoned on everything that they wear and everything that they do. So, again, it was a great opportunity for, for Fort Lauderdale to shine, which we did. And, uh, and I think that, um, you know, this was something to be proud of. I mean, I've been mayor now, this would be the, I'm in my seventh year, and I have to tell you, there's some really signature events that I think, uh, were unrepeatable and, and were totally remarkable. One of them was this, of course. Uh, others include when we were commemor, we were christening the USS Fort Lauderdale. Things like that really give you great pride.
Mr. Monopoly, what about Mr. Monopoly?
Well, we're not there yet.
Oh, okay, okay.
But I think, I think it's moments like that, that really, we all have an opportunity to be proud of where we live and, and who we represent. And, uh, uh, and I want to thank the ownership of the Panthers Organization and their administration for all the support they give to Fort Lauderdale. I was, uh, I was there at the last game with, uh, Commissioner Sturman. We were at the Iceplex, because we're too cheap to buy a ticket at the, and...
No, you did, you did buy a jersey.
Yeah, I bought a jersey.
Yes.
And, uh, uh, and, uh, I tell you, it was amazing, that, the Iceplex is such an amazing investment in our community. Hundreds and hundreds of kids were there, um, cheering on the team. And, uh, it's just, everyone was reconnecting with people, friends, you know, people I haven't seen in a long time, I ran into. Um, just a wonderful thing that we have in our city, and I have to thank the Panther Organization, Vinnie Viola, for making that investment in our city. Um, I can't wait till the, uh, War Memorial Auditorium is open. Uh, another, another wonderful investment they made in us and, uh, something that, uh, is signature, uh, venue for Fort Lauderdale. Anyway, um, as it was mentioned, July 4th, that's on Thursday, we'll be listening to fireworks and In Vogue. Uh, In Vogue concert starts at 7:30 and goes for about an hour, after which we'll, we'll be able to hear fireworks. So, I just wish everybody a happy summer. We'll have tonight's meeting in about 30, 45 minutes. And, uh, and it's been just, uh, uh, very great two weeks that the city has, uh, has been able to experience. So, um, Ms., Madam City Manager, do you have any reports?
Um, just briefly, I'd like to echo what everyone else has said. I couldn't be prouder of the team that we get to work with. So, police, fire, parks, TAM, City Manager's Office, Ben, and a special shout-out to Strategic Communications, Ashley and her team, who worked tirelessly to get the word out about, um, transportation and all those options and, and the maps, et cetera. So, great job to all of you. As I said, couldn't be prouder. Fourth of July, I've also asked Ashley to do some messaging regarding illegal fireworks. We've gotten some concerns from neighbors about the, the displays that go on other than ours. Um, and along with the fire department, I know they always have concerns about the use of illegal fireworks. So, Ashley's team will be getting out some, um, messaging on that. Um, and other than that, safe summer, and we will see everyone here back on August 20th. But we'll be back in the office working on all these things.
Okay.
Back here, not here.
No, no.
This is our last, this is our last time here, right?
The figurative here.
But this is our last time in this building, yes.
Today's our last meeting here in these, uh, for the, for the time being, we never know. It is, it is an award-winning space, so, uh, anyway. So, uh, if there's nothing further, this meeting is concluded. Uh, we'll now go into the, uh, Community Redevelopment Agency Board Meeting. And, Madam Clerk, if you could please call the roll.
Commissioner Herbst. Vice Chair Glassman.
Here.
Commissioner Beasley Pittman.
Here.
Commissioner Sturman.
Here.
Chair Trantallas.
Here. M1, motion approving minutes for the June 18th, 2024 CRA Board Meeting. Do I hear a motion to approve? So, moved and seconded, please call the roll.
Commissioner Sturman.
Yes.
Commissioner Herbst.
Yes.
Vice Chair Glassman.
Yes.
Commissioner Beasley Pittman.
Yes.
Chair Trantallas.
Yes, and then one's approved. R1, a resolution approving a budget amendment appropriation of $1,300,217.50 for revenues received from property sales. We're finally getting change back. Do I hear a motion? Someone like to introduce the resolution?
Introduced.
It's been introduced. Any questions? There being none, please call the roll.
A resolution of the Board of Commissioners of the Fort Lauderdale Community Redevelopment Agency approving a budget amendment and providing for an effective date. Commissioner Sturman.
Yes.
Commissioner Herbst. Vice Chair Glassman.
Yes.
Commissioner Beasley Pittman.
Yes.
Chair Trantallas.
Yes, and that resolution is now approved. Is there any further business at the CRA? There being none, that meeting is concluded. We now move into the Other Post Employment Benefits Board Meeting. Madam, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Herbst. Vice Chair Glassman.
Here.
Commissioner Beasley Pittman.
Here.
Commissioner Sturman.
Present.
Chair Trantallas.
Here. BR1, Other Post Benefit, excuse me, Other Post Employment Benefits Trust Quarterly Investment Report for period ending March 31st, 2024. Anyone have any questions regard to that report? Okay, there being none.
No, no questions, but a comment. Um, so, Linda, why don't you talk to us very briefly about how the, the fund has performed?
Oh, absolutely. Good afternoon, Honorable Mayor, Vice Mayor and Commissioners, Linda Short, Director of Finance. So, this is one of the funds that we have put into a passive investment strategy. So, that means we don't have any money managers or anything like that. They're set at index funds and they're mark-to-market. So, this year, our assumed rate of return for this pension fund, because it says sort of pension fund, is 7%. Year-to-date, we have earned 12.52 on the PPS portion and 14% on the OPEB portion. So, well above the benchmark, which equates to real dollars to the city. It equates to, in the PPS fund, about $955,000, and in the OPEB, which is the health fund, $5.6 million in an earnings year-to-date.
Okay, I, I bring that up, Mayor, because this is something that I fought long and hard for years ago when I was in the auditor's role. And we, when we set up the OPEB trust fund, we did it as, uh, as a pilot project, if you will, to demonstrate the efficacy of passive investments in low-cost index funds. And I'm just glad to see the decision that we made years ago has been consistent with all the academic literature that supports that investment strategy and that it continues to perform well. So, just, uh, very pleased about that. It's been very helpful in, in helping to keep, uh, costs down and, um, and just very excited about that. So, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, drinks are on you, Linda. Thank you. Uh, there's no, there's no vote on that, is there?
No.
Okay. But we can move to M1, motion approving the minutes for the March 19th, 2024 Other Post Employment Benefits Trust Board Meeting.
So moved.
Been moved, I hear, moved and seconded, please call the roll.
Commissioner Sturman.
Yes.
Commissioner Herbst.
Yes.
Vice Chair Glassman.
Yes.
Commissioner Beasley Pittman.
Yes.
Chair Trantallas.
Yes, and that item is now approved. Is there any further business of the Other Post Employment Benefits Board? There being none, that meeting is concluded, and we shall recess till 6:00, until we start an evening meeting. our evening meeting.